All right, good morning colleagues, 25th Navajo Nation Council and also our guests that are here. A roll call has been opened since 9:00 AM. We do have six team members that are present here on the floor that does constitute a quorum. We do have a proposed agenda before us and today is November 26, 2025. And we are here in Window Rock, Arizona, within the council chamber. So we'll call this special session into order at 9:28 AM. And this morning, Delegate Yanito, may you provide our invocation just morning?
Oh, yate, epe no, hehakroh, soduzinbe. Peheka naan shiye di, pe nebe ye, yate, ehojono, heilkanebe ye, kodae, hojono, lehne, hastan, suma, yadilke, shitka. Kusini skanda, ke da hasil zin, do, koon, yate, ehojono, e koon, haat, ai siyone, loke. Naahcha, bitzana, neli, yi, do, kodoe, e nahuit, ado, koon, in laan, ilna, hasa, ani, bina, she, koon. Alcha, hot, e ro, leh, bine, ye, kwa, hine, kha, ye, at, e, be, e, njo, no, kodae. Ya, hot, egi, eya, bine, ye, kwa, elka, naan, hin, tla, di, bi, ahi, ilkanebe, ye, nas, yate, ehojono, e koon. Aden, asylsozi, yate, e, nde, diltsosdi, de, special session, bine, nene, ki, kwa, ahi, ilkane, November 26. Do, e, kusini, skanda, eya, e di, nahat, a, e, kodit, a, e, dat, oll, ilni, do, ni, da, e koon, nde, di, o, bina, si, thani, kat. Pida, ashtlisso, e, nas, e, yate, hid, e, be, koon, be, nas, ol, tat, ol, leh, na, e koon. Njo, no, go, e nahat, ah, ar, nde, koon, be, zan, be, hada, deli, a, ye, bina, she, e koon. Nsi, ki, so, koon, nas, nahit, ah, ina, nas, laa, go, se, suno. Kodae, soduzin, zaal, ah, dat, e, koon, be, ilka, ne, chia, koon, zaal, hol, jiso, yate, e, nahag, an, li, ni. Njo, no, go, e, nas, li, algi, be, yate, e, go, e, di, nahat, an, in, di, la, ro, mle, nde, ilni, shra, altsko, e, kodae, in, ki, di, ni, it, ol, leh, nas. Yate, eho, di, re, chendan, diltsosin, njo, no, be, ya, diltki, do, njo, no, be, ilki, ndi, kato, yate, e, koon. Ya, hot, ehi, bine, ye, e, kwa, e, bina, she, elka, leh, be. Soduzin, cha, det, an, i, re, kodae, e, be, in, chia, hasil, zin, do, koon, yate, ehojono, e koon, haat, ai, siyone, loke. Naahcha, bitzana, neli, yi, do, kodoe, e nahuit, ado, koon, in laan, ilna, hasa, ani, bina, she, koon. Alcha, hot, e ro, leh, bine, ye, kwa, hine, kha, ye, at, e, be, e, njo, no, kodae. Ya, hot, egi, eya, bine, ye, kwa, elka, naan, hin, tla, di, bi, ahi, ilkanebe, ye, nas, yate, ehojono, e koon. Aden, asylsozi, yate, e, nde, diltsosdi, de, special session, bine, nene, ki, kwa, ahi, ilkane, November 26. Do, e, kusini, skanda, eya, e di, nahat, a, e, kodit, a, e, dat, oll, ilni, do, ni, da, e koon, nde, di, o, bina, si, thani, kat. Pida, ashtlisso, e, nas, e, yate, hid, e, be, koon, be, nas, ol, tat, ol, leh, na, e koon. Njo, no, go, e nahat, ah, ar, nde, koon, be, zan, be, hada, deli, a, ye, bina, she, e koon. Nsi, ki, so, koon, nas, nahit, ah, ina, nas, laa, go, se, suno. Kodae, soduzin, zaal, ah, dat, e, koon, be, ilka, ne, chia, koon, zaal, hol, jiso, yate, e, nahag, an, li, ni. Njo, no, go, e, nas, li, algi, be, yate, e, go, e, di, nahat, an, in, di, la, ro, mle, nde, ilni, shra, altsko, e, kodae, in, ki, di, ni, it, ol, leh, nas. Yate, eho, di, re, chendan, diltsosin, njo, no, be, ya, diltki, do, njo, no, be, ilki, ndi, kato, yate, e, koon. Ya, hot, egi, eya, bine, ye, kwa, elka, naan, hin, tla, di, bi, ahi, ilkanebe, ye, nas, yate, ehojono, e koon. Aden, asylsozi, yate, e, nde, diltsosdi, de, special session, bine, nene, ki, kwa, ahi, ilkane, November 26. Do, e, kusini, skanda, eya, e di, nahat, a, e, kodit, a, e, dat, oll, ilni, do, ni, da, e koon, nde, di, o, bina, si, thani, kat. Pida, ashtlisso, e, nas, e, yate, hid, e, be, koon, be, nas, ol, tat, ol, leh, na, e koon. Njo, no, go, e nahat, ah, ar, nde, koon, be, zan, be, hada, deli, a, ye, bina, she, e koon. Nsi, ki, so, koon, nas, nahit, ah, ina, nas, laa, go, se, suno. Kodae, soduzin, zaal, ah, dat, e, koon, be, ilka, ne, chia, koon, zaal, hol, jiso, yate, e, nahag, an, li, ni. Njo, no, go, e, nas, li, algi, be, yate, e, go, e, di, nahat, an, in, di, la, ro, mle, nde, ilni, shra, altsko, e, kodae, in, ki, di, ni, it, ol, leh, nas. Yate, eho, di, re, chendan, diltsosin, njo, no, be, ya, diltki, do, njo, no, be, ilki, ndi, kato, yate, e, koon. Ya, hot, egi, eya, bine, ye, kwa, elka, naan, hin, tla, di, bi, ahi, ilkanebe, ye, nas, yate, ehojono, e koon. Aden, asylsozi, yate, e, nde, diltsosdi, de, special session, bine, nene, ki, kwa, ahi, ilkane, November 26. Do, e, kusini, skanda, eya, e di, nahat, a, e, kodit, a, e, dat, oll, ilni, do, ni, da, e koon, nde, di, o, bina, si, thani, kat. Pida, ashtlisso, e, nas, e, yate, hid, e, be, koon, be, nas, ol, tat, ol, leh, na, e koon. Njo, no, go, e nahat, ah, ar, nde, koon, be, zan, be, hada, deli, a, ye, bina, she, e koon. Nsi, ki, so, koon, nas, nahit, ah, ina, nas, laa, go, se, suno. Kodae, soduzin, zaal, ah, dat, e, koon, be, ilka, ne, chia, koon, zaal, hol, jiso, yate, e, nahag, an, li, ni. Njo, no, go, e, nas, li, algi, be, yate, e, go, e, di, nahat, an, in, di, la, ro, mle, nde, ilni, shra, altsko, e, kodae, in, ki, di, ni, it, ol, leh, nas. Yate, eho, di, re, chendan, diltsosin, njo, no, be, ya, diltki, do, njo, no, be, ilki, ndi, kato, yate, e, koon. Ya, hot, egi, eya, bine, ye, kwa, elka, naan, hin, tla, di, bi, ahi, ilkanebe, ye, nas, yate, ehojono, e koon. Aden, asylsozi, yate, e, nde, diltsosdi, de, special session, bine, nene, ki, kwa, ahi, ilkane, November 26. Do, e, kusini, skanda, eya, e di, nahat, a, e, kodit, a, e, dat, oll, ilni, do, ni, da, e koon, nde, di, o, bina, si, thani, kat. Pida, ashtlisso, e, nas, e, yate, hid, e, be, koon, be, nas, ol, tat, ol, leh, na, e koon. Njo, no, go, e nahat, ah, ar, nde, koon, be, zan, be, hada, deli, a, ye, bina, she, e koon. Nsi, ki, so, koon, nas, nahit, ah, ina, nas, laa, go, se, suno. Kodae, soduzin, zaal, ah, dat, e, koon, be, ilka, ne, chia, koon, zaal, hol, jiso, yate, e, nahag, an, li, ni. Njo, no, go, e, nas, li, algi, be, yate, e, go, e, di, nahat, an, in, di, la, ro, mle, nde, ilni, shra, altsko, e, kodae, in, ki, di, ni, it, ol, leh, nas. Yate, eho, di, re, chendan, diltsosin, njo, no, be, ya, diltki, do, njo, no, be, ilki, ndi, kato, yate, e, koon. Ya, hot, egi, eya, bine, ye, kwa, elka, naan, hin, tla, di, bi, ahi, ilkanebe, ye, nas, yate, ehojono, e koon. Aden, asylsozi, yate, e, nde, diltsosdi, de, special session, bine, nene, ki, kwa, ahi, ilkane, November 26. Do, e, kusini, skanda, eya, e di, nahat, a, e, kodit, a, e, dat, oll, ilni, do, ni, da, e koon, nde, di, o, bina, si, thani, kat. Pida, ashtlisso, e, nas, e, yate, hid, e, be, koon, be, nas, ol, tat, ol, leh, na, e koon. Njo, no, go, e nahat, ah, ar, nde, koon, be, zan, be, hada, deli, a, ye, bina, she, e koon. Nsi, ki, so, koon, nas, nahit, ah, ina, nas, laa, go, se, suno. Kodae, soduzin, zaal, ah, dat, e, koon, be, ilka, ne, chia, koon, zaal, hol, jiso, yate, e, nahag, an, li, ni. Njo, no, go, e, nas, li, algi, be, yate, e, go, e, di, nahat, an, in, di, la, ro, mle, nde, ilni, shra, altsko, e, kodae, in, ki, di, ni, it, ol, leh, nas. Yate, eho, di, re, chendan, diltsosin, njo, no, be, ya, diltki, do, njo, no, be, ilki, ndi, kato, yate, e, koon. Ya, hot, egi, eya, bine, ye, kwa, elka, naan, hin, tla, di, bi, ahi, ilkanebe, ye, nas, yate, ehojono, e koon. Aden, asylsozi, yate, e, nde, diltsosdi, de, special session, bine, nene, ki, kwa, ahi, ilkane, November 26. Do, e, kusini, skanda, eya, e di, nahat, a, e, kodit, a, e, dat, oll, ilni, do, ni, da, e koon, nde, di, o, bina, si, thani, kat. Pida, ashtlisso, e, nas, e, yate, hid, e, be, koon, be, nas, ol, tat, ol, leh, na, e koon. Njo, no, go, e nahat, ah, ar, nde, koon, be, zan, be, hada, deli, a, ye, bina, she, e koon. Nsi, ki, so, koon, nas, nahit, ah, ina, nas, laa, go, se, suno. Kodae, soduzin, zaal, ah, dat, e, koon, be, ilka, ne, chia, koon, zaal, hol, jiso, yate, e, nahag, an, li, ni. Njo, no, go, e, nas, li, algi, be, yate, e, go, e, di, nahat, an, in, di, la, ro, mle, nde, ilni, shra, altsko, e, kodae, in, ki, di, ni, it, ol, leh, nas. Yate, eho, di, re, chendan, diltsosin, njo, no, be, ya, diltki, do, njo, no, be, ilki, ndi, kato, yate, e, koon. Ya, hot, egi, eya, bine, ye, kwa, elka, naan, hin, tla, di, bi, ahi, ilkanebe, ye, nas, yate, ehojono, e koon. Aden, asylsozi, yate, e, nde, diltsosdi, de, special session, bine, nene, ki, kwa, ahi, ilkane, November 26. Do, e, kusini, skanda, eya, e di, nahat, a, e, kodit, a, e, dat, oll, ilni, do, ni, da, e koon, nde, di, o, bina, si, thani, kat. Pida, ashtlisso, e, nas, e, yate, hid, e, be, koon, be, nas, ol, tat, ol, leh, na, e koon. Njo, no, go, e nahat, ah, ar, nde, koon, be, zan, be, hada, deli, a, ye, bina, she, e koon. Nsi, ki, so, koon, nas, nahit, ah, ina, nas, laa, go, se, suno. Kodae, soduzin, zaal, ah, dat, e, koon, be, ilka, ne, chia, koon, zaal, hol, jiso, yate, e, nahag, an, li, ni. Njo, no, go, e, nas, li, algi, be, yate, e, go, e, di, nahat, an, in, di, la, ro, mle, nde, ilni, shra, altsko, e, kodae, in, ki, di, ni, it, ol, leh, nas. Yate, eho, di, re, chendan, diltsosin, njo, no, be, ya, diltki, do, njo, no, be, ilki, ndi, kato, yate, e, koon. Ya, hot, egi, eya, bine, ye, kwa, elka, naan, hin, tla, di, bi, ahi, ilkanebe, ye, nas, yate, ehojono, e koon. Aden, asylsozi, yate, e, nde, diltsosdi, de, special session, bine, nene, ki, kwa, ahi, ilkane, November 26. Do, e, kusini, skanda, eya, e di, nahat, a, e, kodit, a, e, dat, oll, ilni, do, ni, da, e koon, nde, di, o, bina, si, thani, kat. Pida, ashtlisso, e, nas, e, yate, hid, e, be, koon, be, nas, ol, tat, ol, leh, na, e koon. Njo, no, go, e nahat, ah, ar, nde, koon, be, zan, be, hada, deli, a, ye, bina, she, e koon.
All right, good morning colleagues, 25th Navajo Nation Council and also our guests that are here. A roll call has been opened since 9:00 AM. We do have six team members that are present here on the floor that does constitute a quorum. We do have a proposed agenda before us and today is November 26, 2025. And we are here in Window Rock, Arizona, within the council chamber. So we'll call this special session into order at 9:28 AM. And this morning, Delegate Yanito, may you provide our invocation just morning?
Oh, yate, epe no, hehakroh, soduzinbe. Peheka naan shiye di, pe nebe ye, yate, ehojono, heilkanebe ye, kodae, hojono, lehne, hastan, suma, yadilke, shitka. Kusini, skanda, ke da hasil zin, do, koon, yate, ehojono, e koon, haat, ai, siyone, loke. Naahcha, bitzana, neli, yi, do, kodoe, e nahuit, ado, koon, in laan, ilna, hasa, ani, bina, she, koon. Alcha, hot, e ro, leh, bine, ye, kwa, hine, kha, ye, at, e, be, e, njo, no, kodae. Ya, hot, egi, eya, bine, ye, kwa, elka, naan, hin, tla, di, bi, ahi, ilkanebe, ye, nas, yate, ehojono, e koon. Aden, asylsozi, yate, e, nde, diltsosdi, de, special session, bine, nene, ki, kwa, ahi, ilkane, November 26. Do, e, kusini, skanda, eya, e di, nahat, a, e, kodit, a, e, dat, oll, ilni, do, ni, da, e koon, nde, di, o, bina, si, thani, kat. Pida, ashtlisso, e, nas, e, yate, hid, e, be, koon, be, nas, ol, tat, ol, leh, na, e koon. Njo, no, go, e nahat, ah, ar, nde, koon, be, zan, be, hada, deli, a, ye, bina, she, e koon. Nsi, ki, so, koon, nas, nahit, ah, ina, nas, laa, go, se, suno. Kodae, soduzin, zaal, ah, dat, e, koon, be, ilka, ne, chia, koon, zaal, hol, jiso, yate, e, nahag, an, li, ni. Njo, no, go, e, nas, li, algi, be, yate, e, go, e, di, nahat, an, in, di, la, ro, mle, nde, ilni, shra, altsko, e, kodae, in, ki, di, ni, it, ol, leh, nas. Yate, eho, di, re, chendan, diltsosin, njo, no, be, ya, diltki, do, njo, no, be, ilki, ndi, kato, yate, e, koon. Ya, hot, ehi, bine, ye, e, kwa, e, bina, she, elka, leh, be. Soduzin, cha, det, an, i, re, kodae, e, be, in, chia, hasil, njo, no, kandan, la, ro, leh, kodae, yolka. Naah, tli, naas, yu, cha, he, naan, hastan, yadilke, kodae, da, de, yi, yi, kodae, pehe, chia, hojono, hastli, do, leh, hojono, hastli, hojono, hastli.
Hehak, shiash, kodoo, soduzin, man, ka, in, laagi, do, kodoo, njo, no, go, bina, naan, e, kha, kro, leh. And to our guests and families that are listening online, happy Thanksgiving. I know many of our colleagues or many of our family members are now preparing family time. However, just want to say thank you to my colleagues for making the time to be here. Although you may be spending time with your families, but there are very critical issues that are still facing the Navajo Nation. And especially for our employees, kodoo, hehak, niti, do, leh, from myself, from, from the staff, thank you for being here as well. I know there may have been, have been many opportunities to take admin leave, to do family time. However, that you are here, we appreciate you. So I just wanted to start off with that and all of our guests that are here. Do, kodoo, e, na, kikone, a recognition of guests and visiting officials. Colleagues, Q is now open. Chairwoman, Crowdy?
Yate, hehak, thank you, shiash, for that prayer and setting the tone for today. Colleagues here and all of our relatives online, speaker and colleagues. During this time of reflection and thinking of our families, I just want to extend my gratitude to the legislative employees. We know that you are the foundation of the work that we do. We know that in this fiscal year, funding has been tight. But with your help, not only did you do your best to retain our legislative district assistance staff, their funding until today. We also know that some of you provided your own salary and to help contribute. And so I want to, I want to say thank you very much for using the teachings of your family and relatives to know that in times of hardship, that we come together and we help. And so my goal here is to continue with those blessings, not only for our staff budget to be fully restored, but also looking and working together on the direct needs of our Navajo people and helping us monitor to make sure those resources are available at the household level. And that means developing a government and a structure that Che and Masana, who's out there down at the road, over the hill, that their needs are taken care of and that it's a system here that provides those resources to them. And you're critical to that component and my hope is that you mentor and help the next generation of Navajos who want to help their people, teach them the way, the good way, how to be able to be helpful public servants. Teach them the way in terms of what they can do if they're in the urban or border town setting. And let's continue to uplift because we want to move forward with our Navajo Nation Youth Council. And I see all of our staff here as a critical point because our government is unique. And being, you know, a previous professor of Navajo government, it, it is challenging to compare our system and it's also challenging to reform. And it's time for the people's voice to be interweaved in everything we do here. And, and I see you all as an extension of our communities, an extension of why we do the work and why we show up every day. So hehak, because it's our families that bear the brunt of this responsibility. You miss birthdays, you miss graduations, you miss cookouts. And we were teasing each other that I'm now confined to just either bringing drinks or pies to the dinner because they never know if I'm going to be sent somewhere else. And so I think going back to the family is important. With that in mind, Speaker, I wanted to recognize one of our great mentors in the Navajo Nation legal world on the southeast. Shama, if you could stand up, we have our chief public defender, Ms. Bowman. She's been a strong advocate for providing legal services to our... Thirty-two years providing services free to our relatives who find themselves in, in the system. And her focus has always been for like rehabilitation and re, you know, understanding what, what are the needs and why someone will, will eventually end up in a judicial setting. So I appreciate her mentorship. She has been advocating for Navajo Nation in many different functions. And so she has really raised the level of what the nation should be providing in terms of a public defender. Our nation does not right now require a public defender in each setting. And so that could be something that this council looks at because when we talk about prevention, we have an opportunity to redirect individuals who find themselves before the court. And there's still an opportunity for them to give back and to give them those resources. So hehak, Shama, for continuing to bear with us after 32 years, it's amazing and I'll waive the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you Chairwoman for those recognition and appreciation. Next, we do have Honorable Cheryl and Yasi.
Good morning, yate, everybody. I hope you're safe and well. Want to say happy Thanksgiving. I hope you have wonderful time with your families, you have plenty to eat. Today I want to honor a community member, Mr. Harry Lane. He passed away two weeks ago. And Harry Lane was many things. He was a farmer, an educator, a mentor, and a community leader. But above all, he was a man who believed in strengthening our nation by planting seeds, both in the soil and in the minds of our young people. As a farmer, he understood the sacred relationship between our people and the land. He knew that farming is not just work, it is ceremony, patience, and prayer. Harry taught that the land gives back when we care for it with humility, compassion, and respect. Through his, through his harvest every year, he reminded us that self-reliance and food sovereignty began at home and in our fields. As an educator, he shaped generations. He showed our students that their identity, their culture, and their potential were powerful. He encouraged them to dream big while staying rooted in who they are as Dene. His classroom, whether indoors, outdoors, or in the cornfield, was always a place of learning, laughter, and purpose. Harry Lane did not just teach facts. He taught values, he taught discipline, he taught Dene identity. And he did that with kindness and devotion. And I want to honor him. He lived his life in service to his community. His legacy is carried by every young person he taught, every field he tended, and every family he encouraged to believe in the strength of our land and our people. On behalf of the Navajo Nation Council, I want to say hehak to Harry Lane for the years of dedication, a hehak for investing in our youth, a hehak for showing us that to teach is to plant hope and to farm is to sustain our future. May your example continue to guide us as we work to rebuild, to heal, and to strengthen our nation. A hehak. Waive my time.
Thank you Delegate Yasi. And next we have Delegate George Tolth.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Do, kodoo, be swas, ani, tleni, ge. Njo, no, e koon, sabai, adahlte, xiru, ah, an, soho, da, e, hadis, sun, san. Ako, first one again, he's the law, i, aha, i, recognize, edeshli, koon, an, kielchunno, do, na, haat, haalnia. Every day they put their life on the line for us to obey the law. Ako, eya, lla, koon, lla, train, edesla, koon, koon, kielchunno, ako, I just wanted to recognize, sabai, adahlto, sing, koon, 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 haat, haalnia. Ako, the law, druklso, e, aha, aha, she, axt, axt, ayla. Ako, i, i, an, hin, haal, chine, ho, da, e, bina, an, shid, ayla, sun, e, sabak, koon, sun, do, ar, o, staff, na, tleni, do, hehak. An, hin, chi, beso, e, nhis, a, sto, e, koon, Thanksgiving, da, lseka, kwa, kwa, llena, ah. Aba, yas, sun, koon, on, at, ani, an, adan, hi, dad, ili, leh, an, tron, chida, e, nhi, kix, dad, ni, t, in, leh. Alch, in, den, he, chenda, li, e, ndeshi, do, sometime, your overtime's denied, count times denied, you spend here with us. So, ani, ho, dha, dha. So, ani, do, a, e nchadis si. Anchadha jopad, o, do on chaltsin dahno, lto. Do, do on hi, na hazan, o, e xinlto, bacho denos san, do, yad, o. Ado, lhaaw she, yahai, staff, e bizda, nchilin de, e xin, e, e yad, at eh, ndandlino, lichkoo, yad, o, koon, i, ba lchan si, kees, o, lichkoo. Achot, o, e, tsuske, she, kudo, on chaltsin, lini gi. Ado, anhid, o, on chaltsin, hulno, lto, on chana, dahka. Ado, ndasulahts, o, do, koon bachi, ni, tsun, do. Natani, no lini, batso, do, tsun, do, i bachi, win, tsun. Ado, on chahasthui, do, nchisan, i koon jopad, ani, chin, a, bat san, da, di, do. Beso bo ohnil, ana, ndadli, koo. E xinlto, banso, kees, o, bini, e yahai, koon natani, no lini, do. Bich, ndahkado, bich, la, ndadli, ado, oh. Obinahi, do, kaha, achot, a, e yahai. Ado, nchi, official dahno, lto, ado, managers, chapter staff, lals, koo, banet, dan, lico. Nik, isla, diz, i, ado, nchilohot, e, xin, e, yad, eh, na, do, lich, bison haztlini, lino, lich, tsun, tsun, tsuske. Every day, hot, a, tsuske, san, lico, koon, i, shgalhi, de, eh, o, koon, a, yad, o, koon. Nchilahoi, do, a, shoten, ni, tsun, lisho, do, an tsuske. Ado, nchi, chapter, official, da, koon, dahno, koo. E, altsko, bina, shni, lino, di, koon, kesmshiazo, e, bi, bi, na, ni, ka, skan, koo. Njono, she, e yahai, chin, anche, de, do, lich, jopai, nosan, ani, lich, jopai, ni, tsun. Yad, o, na, ni, da, ro, lich, do, yad, o. Nchitso, ruzan, na, tlo, do, on hi, na, tlo, do, lich, tsun, dechin. Do, nchis sabeye, iltchi, do, lino, lich, tsun, dechin. Chala, on chahasthui, the sacrifice to use the code, e, dechin, be, ni, de. Be, nchi, oh, khal, be, nchi, tso, ruzan, di, tsun, a, koo. E, de, yahai, hot, a, be yashkili, she, koon. Shilhat, eh, lini, asus sabeyashkio, koo. Achot, a, she, yaho, a, be keri, nda, i second language. So, anyway, koon, e, de, da, nosan, koon. Sa, dlini gi, be, rjo, lti, a, de, iltchi, do, be, yad, o, e, da, hiditsa, a. Achot, a, anhayat, eh, she, la, hot, ni, tsun, o, joi, la, hot, eh, e, bich, gran, hot, ana. Eh, na, ha, andlin, he, e yahai, ale, jo, nal, ino, na, beg, e, at, hito, tso, ruzan, do, na, ha, ra, be, hestanal, gi, achot, a, i, koon. Eh, nchilta, ho, iljo, she, eh, ol, yet, nechilne, do, do. Achot, a, in, dan, hi, nes, cha, nchitcha, 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 lita, hola. Nchitcha, do, tsui, hulno, do, koon, do, a, do, Bible, daheno, alli, do. Ado, NSI, da, achot, a, e yahai, nchinn, na, ha, a, nlin, a, la, e, bich, tso, dealsan. Eh, do, beg, she, yad, hidan, lico. Achot, a, e, hadis, san, lico. Anotsko, e yahai, digi, nchilta, hola, do, yad, o, nchina, de, lchak, o, liso, staff, do, ado, beswas, ani, lini, do, second branch, and judicial. Achot, e, lish, tsutu, thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Tolth. Next, we do have Delegate Shana Entlaw.
Good morning, shedeja, ado, anotsko, koon, shenan, na, dan, oh, lini. Ado, she, eh, o, heh, ndedeshni, lla, do, chala, e, kesmshiaze, e, koo, na, na, benel, ni, do, lich. Ado, hasthui, do, san, e, bina, nti, ndan, lini gi. Do, nchitian, adan, nebitian, xin, lla, eh, chi, dasil, i, do, lich. Njono, go, she, nchitcha, ho, jon, do, lich. Ado, ani, lto, e, nchih, one hazan, gi, lla, eh, ya, nchis salat, o, dahlo. Ako, e, bina, chen, ilto, e, bachi, hin, san. Ado, lla, she, e, ati, ndi, namado, nje, halo, do, nchon, ne, ne, lich, ne, tsoh, ken, nanale, ke, dan, lini gi. Eh, lto, e, benel, ni, do, lich. Chala, e, bina, nti, dahlo, do, lich. Ado, a, ni, koon, e, nchis, a, lini gi, e, be, de, lich, ne, do, eh, tso, ruzan, da, eh. Ako, she, e, bachi, hin, san.
So this morning, I just want to say good morning to all of our Navajo Nation employees. We wish you a good Thanksgiving break. Thank you for all of your steadfast work and your commitment to services of our Dene Nation. I also want to just acknowledge my two agents that are here today. I also want to thank our council for taking the time to be here and then also to consider the legislations that are set here today. I do have Mr. Byron Shorty that is in the gallery and he is representing the Navajo Nation Telecommunications Office. And then we also have Mr. Beecher here in attendance. So I want to thank my colleagues for the support throughout the year and at your homes. May you receive many blessings today. And then thank you for taking the time to do the work on behalf of the Navajo Nation. I also want to say good morning to all of our Navajo Nation chapters, the officials, the administration, and of course, our voters. Thank you for having an interest in your community and then also the Navajo Nation government. And as we continue to move through the holidays, that we move forward in prayer and unity so that we may all produce our own healing at home and within our communities. And then also to our first responders, thank you for being on call 24/7. I know that's a great burden upon them, but we appreciate their work. And then this morning, I just want to say thank you to Honorable Yanito for the wonderful prayer that he delivered this morning and may that carry us forward as we continue on with our session today. I also want to thank Honorable Speaker Curly and then Michelle Espino for the work they're doing on behalf of the legislative branch. And then taking this time to also say thank you to our Legislative District Assistants. It is bittersweet to see them with their last day on Friday. However, many of them will continue to serve as volunteers and assist in the community, but we do appreciate all of their work, how they've been working with their chapters, and then also our stakeholders within the community. So we do appreciate each and every one of them. I want to especially thank my LDA, Ms. Sherilyn Sells, and that she is working hard today. We do have our Chinli-Chid Arpa Housing Program. So I just want to make that announcement as well, that Chinli is taking applications up to December 5th. And so we do have many families that are in need of homes and infrastructure and that we continue to advocate on their behalf, that we do have funding that is still out there that we need to expend and that we use that wisely and that we use that in good faith so that we're able to provide services for our people. And then also to those that are depressed. Sometimes the holidays do create depression for a lot of our people because they have lost loved ones. So let's take this time to remember those as well, that they feel the love and compassion from all of us. And then last but not least, I want to say happy birthday to my younger sister and to my Nali man, who I'm going to honor at this time as well. Although he is not here, we still continue on the teachings of our elders and that's very important. Some of them, they still, you know, are with us. And so take care of your grandparents, your elders, make sure that they're doing well. And then to all our families out there, stay warm with the change in the weather. This can bring on some hardship for individuals, so we remember those at this time. So, e, kota, o, heh, ndedeshni, lla, do, she, eh, tso, ruzan, e, be, de, lich, ni, do, lich. Nano, nas, go, yikato, lich, heh, shedeja. I'll yield the time back to you. Kehet. Thank you, Delegate Tolth, and for recognizing many of our community members. And also happy birthday to your family members. So, e, kota, she, heh, do, lich, lto. And next, we have Delegate Carl Slater.
Thank you, Speaker and colleagues. I do something I ordinarily don't do, but I just would like to, I shouldn't say I don't do, but express my appreciation to IHS and NTUA. We have a waterline project between Rock Point and Round Rock that was recently put into the phase where they're setting up all the meter loops and, or, you know, the equipment and everything. And I received some videos yesterday of people having running water for the first time. And it was something that was incredibly special to me. And in this moment, when we have so much tumult and turmoil in the Navajo Nation, to see services continue to be delivered and things that I've been working on since the, you know, even before I got into office. And my predecessor, who is an incredible individual and served here in the council, the late Nelson Begay, that he worked on, and I'm sure Delia Karadi, working with him, helped get this project going, the White Springs Project. That our people deserve it and there's a reason that we're here to provide and meet the basic needs of our people. And in moments when we can feel like, well, what's the point? Everything's for naught, everything's futility, that in fact, there are things that we can do that will provide immense service to our people and we can bring them joy. And it's fantastic that entering into this holiday season that they will have the blessings of running water and piped water that will support their households. And each one of us have helped connect people through the CARES and ARPA projects to running water, to electricity. And some of us like to be there and want to, you know, explain that, yeah, I did this. I helped connect you, I made sure there was funding for it and ensure that there is a connection between how people elect leadership into office and the results that it in turn yields. I personally avoid those things. I think it's a veneration of self and we should be negating the ego. And people who seek honor end up getting farther and farther from truth and wisdom. So in this one little moment, I do want to just highlight that there is something great that happened this past week and I can't wait for the next two weeks of people continuing to have their water turned on for all those Chays and Azmasanas that never had running water in their life. Thank you, Speaker, I'll yield my time.
Thank you, Delegate Slater. And next to Chairman Orasso.
Good morning. I had to pick and choose whether to be here or be at a service for my Shama yajigo. They, they chinkat, so, shinkat, na, what they, le, today. Koo, a, si, a, a, Shama, koo, he, a, jet, a, hot, a. We hope that today comes out to what we hope today's outcome will bring. As leadership, you pick and choose where you go for the day. Shan, she, hu, at, do, di, t, eh, koo, and, da, haz, ti, in, de. Kodo, nahat, ani, ni, be, ke, nchiltsa, lich. Do, no, chana, a, la, ke, wajet, inla, ntsun, lich. Ah, she, kodo, ni, yid, wada. De, in, le, de, lla, na, eka, koo, do. Lla, na, shta, do, a, de, ni, shet, she, yahai, ya, lo, hirmen, hol, dre, thod, eh, she, hu, lli, lwa. Koo, hot, eh, koo, beg, binda, iltsa. Koo, di, ch, she, jo, she, a, a, she, t, eh, koo. Eh, da, ilia, i, da, ilia, do, lich, in, de. O, hot, eh, oh, jo, be, 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 ljo, lki, ndi, ka, do. Eh, eh, be, be, nas, chadho, she, da, it, a, lo, chani, eh, she, da, il, lich. Koon, a, do, she, nchinn, ha, sana. Koon, de, o, 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 bana, nchinn, shkha, eh, o, hot, o, a, do, a, 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 tsil, o, tsu, da, il, lich. O, an, le, de, da, hi, de, hi, a, da, an, le, de. Shama yajib, ah, chi, nani, boga, de, ba, ti, shal. Koo, hot, eh. Allar, eh, i, gis, eh, be, haz, ani, bini, e, ni, ya. Ado, nda, e, be, keri, o, e, koo, do, i, na, shna, lho, lich. Eh, yadi, be, kha, she, shi, thol, lich. O, da, ben, shah, si, tu, lich, do, a, o, do, nda, a, di, da, a, di, is, no, t, a, is. And a, di, a, kesmsh, binyajib, a, dah, shi, shi. A, do, a, den, hi, gadin, da, da, haz, a, gi, na, ha, nda, il, de. Ha, di, she, iltsin, na, dah, kha, ha, ke, eh. Banse, dah, kees, do, jo, da, hi, no, tsa. Lha, da, no, chi. Ado, beg, ha, la, da, eh, do, nini. Inan, le, ni, a, ni, bacha, ch, ki, ro, lich. A, ni. Ni, la, eh, a, jet, o, 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 be, dah, ni, yajiz, da, ri, na, da, da, eh, jot, la, lich. Eh, do, do, a, si, ye, koo. Hot, a, ben, shi, da, eh. Jo, da, eh, hi, no, tsa, koo, de, dah, shi, shi. Hu, at, na, dah, zoh, kha. Dah, asthui, do, a, jet, ni, masan, do, nchitche, nchinn, na, da, she, in, le, de. Chij, iti, dan, lich. Chij, mah, nda, ha, hi. That's your responsibility. Eh, nchi, a, de. Am, an, le, ni, ha. Am, hasan, le, ni, hulno, koo. She, she, masan, hulno, hol, jix. A, an, le, de, be, la, jet, chij, jo, lich, nda, hi, ke, ho. Ako, do, an, le, de, sk, a, zo, chij, do, be, kana, ha, de, tsu, la. Be, la, jet, bini, eh, a, ha, t, eh, koo, eh, hot, a, nda, chi, ye. Oh, she, oh, de, shnich, lich, she, she, masan, eh, hot, no, a, jet, na, a, den, chadani, ga, ga, shin, chon. Eh, o, 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 eh. Edi, shw, shin, zon, eh, a, di, t, a, ni, eh. Ado, be, ch, eh, yad, he, eh, a, di, chij, jo, yil, lich. Ado, nab, del, a, o, hot, a, chij, jo, yil, lich. Achot, eh, koo. Just, we, do, san, yin, da, nchit. Kadeya, you have to, chij, shah, no, ye. That's what the elders have to say, or even down to their grandkids. Ni, hjan, eh, ni, masan, da, zi, ni, mada, da, zi. They're only a phone call away. But when it comes to holiday seasons, achot, eh, koo, ni, shet, na, lich. O, hot, eh. Ah, hul, tsu, do, lich, nan, ta, a, o, hot, a, ben, shah, si, tu, heh. Jo, she, eh, nchi, da, do, a, do, nda, ha, she, nchilta, haz, a, den, nchi, gadin.
Yeah, thank you, Shija, Chairman Orasso. Next, we do have Delegate Herman Daniels, Shias.
Yeah, kodo, Shama, Madam Speaker. Ar, nda, kodo, shenan, da, ani, lini gi, kodo, 25th Council, ar, nda, kodo, his staff. Ni, he, ga, di, t, a, do, nchinn, na, ha, stha, koo, heh, kodo. Ado, kodo, nga, ita, kodo, shi, che, yah, zige, ita, kodo, ba, dah, shi, shi, koo, eh, haz, an, gi. Nchil, haz, koo, kodo, nga, ita, Thanksgiving, ba, dah, shi, shi, ro. Koo, dah, shi, a, koo. Ke, yah, na, ke, yah, da, da, but, o, chi, koo. Nga, it, chapters, nas, na, 110 chapters, eh, bani, lich, koo, de, ne, da. Eh, koo, a, de, cha, nas, na, dah, hola, do, na, na, be, bana, da, klab, seed, a, nas, na, ro. Eh, do, heh, bede, de, shnich, lo, na, na, Happy Thanksgiving, bede, de, shnich, ro. Ah, ltsko, kodo, do, lla, do, dag, o, zat, eh, kodo, ado, na, na, sthui, do, san, i. Dah, zha, zha, go, koon, ya, dat, eh, koo, benda, she, koo, do, eh, hua, da, na, do, na, na, da, da, o, da, she, koo. Hot, eh, lich, esthui, esthui, koo, dah, hola, do, san, i, dah, hola, eh, hu, a, de, koo. Hu, in, lich, kha, o, a, hot, eh, lich, koo, namasi, da, da, eh, lich, eh, bana, koo. Achot, a, zah, she, nso, koo, o, banse, kees, a, de, shil, o, lich, koo. Ako, eh, de, i, si, heh, dini, do, lich, kodo, dah, shi, a, koo. A, da, dah, hul, koo, do. Ado, nda, kodo, kodo, ne, ne, do, lich, kodo, ch, ibanse, kees, o, shil, o, lich, koo, a, de, chala, hot, eh, chala, itzala. Kuegi, nchi, Washington, ik, galigi. Kodo, tsoh, des, she, benda, koon, nga, ita, koo, kodo, shi, je, bich, eh, be, kha, koo. Honorable Yanito, eh, heh, kodo, eh, she, benel, ni, do, lich, kodo. Danil, zen, do, lich, kodo. Sa, yad, eh, gi, kodo, be, yil, ti, do, lich. Sa, be, nas, eh, do, taligi, be, yil, ti, do, lich. Ado, na, na, yad, eh, nsi, kees, do, lich, it, ne, 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 do, lich. Ne, ne, de, ni, in, o, nsi, kees, o, yil, ti, do, lich, it, ne. Ako, kodo, nga, ita, a, si, a, si, nchik, eh, lini gi, i, chadad, ok, in, lich, koon, nga, ita, during COVID. Ako, nga, it, 20, 20, do, shten, koo, des, shi, shi, koz, do, you, eh, kodo, nchik, eh, lini gi, nchitza, bede, ne, de. De, shet, in, de, da, de. Ik, eh, kodo, nga, it, nchik, eh, da, lini gi, do, na, nchit, nchit, chahas, she, lla, dah, shi, a, koo. Bed, a, de, ik, eh, kodo, eh, be, jee, da, nez, koo, do, na, na, kodo, lla, da, de, cha, cha, nde, de, zoh, koo. Achot, eh, koo, achot, a, na, da, eh, shi, ni, do, lich, tsun, kodo, eh. Banse, kees, o, shil, o, lich, koo, a, de. Asthui, da, an, lich. San, i, da, an, lich, kodo. Hal, lebe, lich, hal, lebe. Ha, jo, do, lich, no, she, in, lich. Ha, jo, lla, yall, tsk, tsk.
And staff, if you could help read our proposed agenda into the record.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, members of the Navah Nation Council. This is the proposed agenda of the 25th Navah Nation Council Special Session, Wednesday, November 26, 2025, 9:00 a.m. Presiding is Honorable Chris Lynn Curly, Speaker of the 25th Navah Nation Council. One, call session to order, roll call invocation. Two, recognize guests and visiting officials to the Navah Nation. Three, review and adopt the agenda. Four, old business, none. Five, new business, item A, legislation 0261-25. Item B, legislation 0233-25. C, legislation 0249-25. Six, close of session announcements adjournment, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. And colleagues, motion, motion by Delegate Tolp. Is there a second? Second by Delegate Shawna Anclaw. Chairman Vince James.
Good morning, Speaker, and members of the council. Ado, Kodo. Really quickly, I did ask Honorable Yasi if she requested for a moment of silence in the recognition, but maybe we can do that towards the, at the end of our agenda, the under-announcement or something. There, Speaker, kindly requesting that. I'd like to also make a motion to do a consent agenda for new business A, legislation number 0261-25, and then B, legislation number 0233-25. Those two, I'd like to make a consent agenda, but I know one of them is two-thirds votes. So, reserve my time, thank you.
Reserve time of 4:10. And there is a motion for new business A, 0261-25, and 0233-25, which is labeled as letter B. And is there a second? Second by Vice Chair Carl Slater. Colleagues, queue is open for amendment number one. Second call. And third call. Two minutes on the board, colleagues, to vote on amendment number one. And for the record, if this amendment does pass, it will, the consent agenda will require a two-thirds vote of the council, so that's 16 votes. And also for announcement purposes, colleagues, I know many of you did sign up for the Thanksgiving potluck. If you need help with your food transportation, we have staff here that can do that. So Chair Jesus is actually hosting us at St. Michael's Chapter. So if you do need that delivery, staff is also here to do that. And we have 20 seconds on the board. Delegate Arviso. And we do have a vote of 19 in favor, zero opposed, with Speaker not voting. Amendment number one carries, and going back to our main motion. Chair James, you do have reserve time of 4:10.
The Kodo legislation number 0249-25. President Bu Nigren. [speaking Navah] Kodo legislation 0261-25. Speaker, the members of the 25th Navah Nation Council, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman James, for those comments. And colleagues, are there any other recommendations for our agenda here today? Second call and third call. And staff, if you could do a second reading, then we will go to a board for the vote.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Amendment one, add legislation 0261-25 and 0233-25 to consent agenda. That is new item A, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, staff. And colleagues, this will be a main motion vote to adopt our agenda. Two minutes on the board. And we do have a final vote of 19 in favor, zero opposed, with Speaker not voting. Thank you, colleagues. We have adopted our agenda for today. Going down to number four, old business, none. Number five, new business, is a consent agenda. Staff, if you could help read our consent agenda into the record.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Consent agenda, legislation 0261-25. In action relating to the Budget and Finance and Navakia Tik Committees and the Navah Nation Council, approving $7,833,373 from the unreserved undesignated fund balance, UUFB, for the legislative and executive branches to fund for, fund their operations for fiscal year 2026, waiving 12 NNC Section 820E, Section 820F, Section 820J, and Section 820L. Prime sponsor is Honorable Chris Lynn Curly, co-sponsor Honorable Shandine Parrish. There are committee reports attached to the legislation. The first from the Budget and Finance Committee dated November 25, 2025. Recommended due pass with one amendment. Amendment one, one, page three, lines 11 through 14, delete current Exhibit C and insert new Exhibit C. The current Exhibit C reflects OMB's review of both the legislative and executive branches' budget documents. Two, page three, lines 13 through 14, delete the lines in their entirety. Three, page three, lines 21 through 23, delete the lines in their entirety. Four, page three, line 13, insert new paragraph C as follows. New language, underline, paragraph C. The Office of Management and Budget provided its budget impact analysis as required by 12 NNC Section 820M. The OMB memo is attached as Exhibit C to reflect an analysis, and reflects an analysis of both the legislative and executive branches' budgets, in underline. Five, Exhibit A, delete the current Appendix J document supplemental funding proposal summary and replace with the new Appendix J documents from each legislative branch business unit included in the legislation. The Appendix J documents are to be inserted before each legislative branch business unit's budget forms to be consistent with Exhibit D. Six, page three, lines 18 through 21, delete these lines in their entirety. Seven, page three, line 18, insert new paragraph E as follows. New language, underline, E, the Office of the Controller provided a memorandum as provided by 12 NNC Section 820L, indicating the proposed executive branch expenditures are recurring. The Controller's memos for the executive branch business units are included in Exhibit E, in underline. Eight, insert OOC memo for the Office of the Public Defenders, request into Exhibit E. Insert OMB's memorandum for Office of the Public Defenders into Exhibit C. Nine, page four, line one, make the changes as indicated below after the Navah Nation legislative, insert an executive, in underline, and insert ES to branch, to find, overstrike its, and insert their. Ten, in Exhibit D, insert new budget forms for budget business unit 108125, Administrative Services Center. Eleven, in Exhibit D, insert Appendix J in the budget forms for the Office of the Public Defender. Twelve, in Exhibit D, delete current cover sheet for the executive branch and replace with corrected. Cover sheet reflects the inclusion of public defenders offices and the correct amount for the Department of Water Resources Operations and Maintenance. Thirteen, relabel current Exhibit E, chapter resolutions, to reflect the amendments made above. Fourteen, renumber, reletter succeeding paragraph sections and exhibits as necessary and appropriate. The Office of Legislative Services and the Office of Legislative Counsel are authorized to make technical edits, including recalculating totals to this legislation in its exhibits to implement the Navah Nation Council's intent. This amendment supersedes inconsistent language and any other amendments which language shall be conformed to this amendment. Committee report from the Navakia Tik Committee dated November 25, 2025. This legislation was passed and referred to the Navah Nation Council with no amendment. This legislation is final authority with Navah Nation Council. Per Navah Nation Council Rules of Order Rule 9, legislation has been read into record by electronic voice recording. Legislation 0233-25, in action relating to the Resources and Development Law and Order and Navakia Tik Committees and the Navah Nation Council, amending to NNC Section 3454, membership of the Navah Nation Telecommunications Regulatory Commission. Prime sponsor is Honorable Shawna Anclaw, co-sponsor Honorable Sherrill Yasi. There are committee reports attached to the legislation from the Resource and Development Committee dated October 15, 2025, recommended due pass with no amendment. Committee report from the Law and Order Committee dated October 30, 2025, recommended due pass with no amendment. And a committee report from the Navakia Tik Committee dated November 13, 2025, the legislation was passed and referred to the Navah Nation Council with no amendment. This legislation is final authority with Navah Nation Council. Per Navah Nation Council Rules of Order Rule 9, legislation has been read into record by electronic voice recording. Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. And colleagues, motion, Delegate Sherrill Yasi. Is there a second? Second by Delegate Danny Simpson. And colleagues, we will put two minutes on the board for the main motion of the consent agenda. And it will require a two-thirds vote of the council. Time, 19 in favor, zero opposed, with Speaker not voting. Main motion for the consent agenda passes, and thank you, colleagues, very much. Thank you, and especially many hopes and best wishes to our LDAs who were included in the legislation. So thank you, colleagues. And moving on to B, new business B. That will be legislation 0249-25. Sponsor is Honorable Shawna Anclaw. Staff, if you could help read the legislation to the record.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members of the Navah Nation Council, item B, legislation 0249-25. In action relating to the Law and Order and Navakia Tik Committees and the Navah Nation Council, confirming the appointment of Chris Beecher, Esquire, as the Navah Nation Attorney General. Prime sponsor is Honorable Shawna Anclaw, co-sponsor Honorable Lester C. Yasi. This legislation has committee reports attached from the Law and Order Committee dated October 30, 2025, recommended due pass with no amendment. Committee report from the Navakia Tik Committee dated November 13, 2025, the legislation was table and referred to Navah Nation Council with no amendment. This legislation is final authority with Navah Nation Council. Per Navah Nation Council Rules of Order Rule 9, legislation has been read into record by electronic voice recording. Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. And colleagues, first call for questions, comments, and Q. Second call. And third call. So no questions, comments, we will go for a two-minute vote, a point of order, oh, motion is second, sorry. Motion? Got ahead of myself. Kodo Shiyaja, no. Delegate Daniels, tihlo, no. Motion? Motion by Delegate Mitchell, second. Delegate Herman Daniels. I still don't see anyone in queue, colleagues, so I'm going to call for a vote on the main motion. Two minutes on the board, colleagues, and this is a majority vote. Colleagues, time has expired. Vice Chair Johnson, Chair Shandine Parrish, and Chair Brenda Jesus. And that is a vote of zero in favor, 19 opposed, with the Speaker not voting. So the main motion fails. And again, thank you, Mr. Chris Beecher, thank you for all your service to the Navah Nation. Colleagues, number six, close of meeting, announcements. Chairwoman Karri.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Colleagues, so I, Speaker, want to request a leadership meeting. In reading President Nigren's temporary restraining order request, there's a few citations that his external attorneys identified that the president is covered under Navah Nation law when he relies on guidance from the Navah Nation Department of Justice. And so in that opinion, I'm assuming is public, President Nigren's attorneys are arguing that President Nigren relied on the Department of Justice regarding Zenny Holmes and regarding the decision with Controller McCabe, and is stating that there should be no adverse, I think, actions. I don't have it in front of me. So I'd like to have a leadership meeting to clarify, because in my reading of the law, that is covered under the Navah Nation Attorney General opinion, and there's a process to that opinion. And what this raises now is, and as some of my colleagues have mentioned, the status of Department of Justice. So our law states, you know, the Attorney General, the Deputy Attorney General, and if there's a vacancy in the Attorney General, then the Deputy Attorney General will act in that capacity. And we currently do not have a confirmed acting Attorney General. So I'd like to have a leadership meeting and a discussion about whether, in terms of authority, because there is Navah Nation Department of Justice guidance on when there is a vacancy, or like for these acting directors, directors that have voted no confidence, you could send out that email from Assistant Attorney General Mel Rotis, where he stated, because the law does not prohibit, or like lacks that clarification, that they determine that these individuals without confirmation have the full power and authority of a confirmed individual, which I vehemently disagree with. And so I think we have to stand strong in our position. I've reviewed from my colleagues, a nice wraparound discussion about the authority when it comes to acting division directors and acting, you know, we talked about the controller and some of these like made-up positions, like interim controller, that doesn't exist in Navah Nation law. I know my colleague has mentioned another job description that doesn't exist under Department of Justice. We have a plethora of deputy division directors that, in my understanding, is not part of their plan of operation, or we don't have approved organizational plans. And so we do have individuals who are getting paid by Navah Nation that, in my opinion, should not have any authority to make decisions on behalf of the Navah people. And so I'd like to request that leadership meeting for clarification in terms of how we move forward. We do have the FRF staff here, and this is my concern, is, you know, a few weeks ago, they were pulled from their duties, and that has delayed all of the bathroom renovations across Navah Nation. So it's actions by unconfirmed division directors are directly impacting federal dollars, but also that money is to be spent to help our relatives combat COVID-19. And as a delegate during that time, to have every day the count of the relatives we've lost, we should never forget what happened. And these political gains need to stop. And as a council, I'm asking you, Speaker, and my colleagues, let's convene, let's think about everything that we have identified, and how are we going to respond? Because the people demand that of us. It's rare to have someone ever tell me, let it slide, let it go under the rug. 99.9 times, they're saying, we want a government that functions, we want our funding to be accounted for, and we want our people to be served. So I know we have President Bu Nigren So, I know we have President Boo Nigren here. Thank you, Shiyaz, but we need to do better.
Thank you, Chairwoman Karadi, and welcome, Yateh. President Dr. Boo Nigren. Thank you for being here. I didn't see you walk in through the front doors, but thank you for being here and being here with us when counsel. A announcement. And colleagues, just a reminder, we do have five minutes if you do want to speak, so I am keeping track of time. Next, Chair James.
Ahiaha, thank you very much again. President Nigren. Thank you. But other than that, I'd like to yield the rest of my time over to Shumasona, Honorable Amber Kinazbak Karadi.
There's a yielding time of four minutes and 20 seconds. Chairwoman Karadi, do you accept?
I do, thank you. So, in addition to the leadership meeting, what I would request from President Dr. Boo Nigren is, what is the way, as a council delegate, to request assistance from staff who are hired and are compensated at the most elite rate? But yet, as elected leaders, myself, no response or feedback. Yesterday, at the Budget and Finance Committee, and I want to raise this to my colleagues, the committee had to recess for nearly two hours to do the work of the executive. And this is where we're constantly put in a position and need to talk about then. What is, when executive programs fail to meet the needs of the community utilizing Navajo Nation law policies and procedures? There has to be an accountability measure. Because to wait two hours for Office of Management and Budget to review a document they had earlier that day declined, there's no rationale for that. Now, we could have waived the law, but executive programs have to be accountable. The plan of operation coincides with the organizational chart. What coincides with performance measures? What coincides with the budget? And that's how we move forward, is a performance-based budget. So, when you have delegates who, and ChatGPT can tell you, ninety percent of my time is doing the work of executive. I'm doing a division director's job, a program manager's job, a political appointee's job. We're doing all of this, and then also trying to do our job authorized by law, which is create the laws, amend the laws, do the oversight, do the auditing, and do everything that we're elected to do. So, I do have a form here, and that's why I need to know, what is the proper way to get communication with executive programs? And they should be accountable within a week to provide us a response. I have a letter here from an elder who does not have a restroom in her home. So, she said someone came to her house, and no communication, no contact. She doesn't know where to go. So, we've been spending hours on trying to figure out what executive program met with this elder. Then, second, what program, and do they still have the funding? And how are they going to meet this elder's need? And that is something that we should push to the executive programs, because that's what we fund them for. This is their performance measures, to provide these direct services to our Navajo Nation people. And this elder should not have to try to come and track down the council delegate. She should have contact number to someone at executive to work directly with, like a case management, and then just keep us updated. Because that's when we, as leadership. So, as my last minute, we still do not know, as of yesterday, we asked the controller, what is the status of the K-9 search and rescue funding? He does not know. He said, that's a question for Office of Management and Budget. So, I requested all of the budget forms from Office of Management and Budget. And so, in this leadership meeting, Speaker, we need a response if this money was given back to the Four Corners K-9 search and rescue. We have the memo from Controller McCabe that rescinded that decision that had a high-level tone at the top override. We cannot go into contract to get them vehicles for search and rescue until we have that money available. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Chairwoman Karadi, and colleagues. Any other announcements? We are at the end of our agenda on number six, close of session and announcements. Motion to adjourn by Vice Chair Slaters, or second by Chair Eugene R. Charles Newton. Point of order by Chair James.
Ahiaha, thank you. Earlier, I requested, and it was requested by our colleague, also moment of silence. If we could do that before we adjourn. The 25th Nauvoo Nation Council and speakers. Ahiaha, thank you.
Chair James, thank you for that. And sorry, would apologize for that. And Delegate Cheryl Inyazi for Harry Lane. And then, many of my colleagues also spoken about many of our relatives that won't be at our Thanksgiving table this coming holiday, so we want to remind or remember them, and also in memories of our communities and also our families. So, if you could join me, colleagues, and stand for a moment of silence for all of our relatives on Navajo Nation. Thank you, colleagues. And we do have a motion set in place by Delegate Carl Slater, second by Chair Eugene R. Charles Newton for adjournment. Question on adjournment. So, that's a point of privilege raised by Chairwoman Karadi.
Thank you, and I'm sorry, I don't want to delay, so this could also be a comment or a request. I would like to ask Speaker and my colleagues here, if political appointees, what would be the process to defund political appointees who have not been properly hired or followed the budget instruction manual in how their position was created? Would be the question I would ask. I don't want to delay the adjournment. So, if I pushed it, and if you could put that under my question, under adjournment. And that would be my only question under adjournment. And I'll waive the rest of my time. Thank you, Speaker.
Great, thank you, Chairwoman Karadi. I think there's several different avenues that could be taken through legislative action, since we are the Navajia, not this council, but Navajia Tik Committee is an oversight of the executive offices. So, I think within the powers and authorities of Navajia Tik Committee of any type of monetary budget matters that we can look into. So, that would be a direction for Chief Legislative Council and also Speaker staff, if you could keep that on a to-do list, to look at those options. Yes, and we would need Department of Human Resources and Personnel Management. We've been having no communication or no feedback from that department as well on needed information. So, just putting that on the record as well. Chairman Otto So on adjournment, five minutes.
Since here on the issue of political appointees, I think from the beginning of this council, I did make, when we came in, I did indicate that we need to change the process and the law. It's codified in law of how the division directors are selected. And at the time, I asked that we, that the directors work at the pleasure of council, and that's when, at the time, the former Legislative Council indicated that the law had to change and title two. And I believe that's the process to go. And I think our Legislative Council, we need to start that process to have, to go down that route, because other than that, you know, we're going to end up to be in this, you know, for future council. This is what's going to happen. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, for that recommendation as well. So, we got that one noted. And colleagues, any other comments or questions on adjournment? Second call. And Delegate Helena N. Begay. Shuma.
Oh, I know Delegate Karadi mentioned this, that the team from FRF, you know, we were doing so good working with them and communicating with them with our projects. Until they went back under DCD, and it seems that we lost, we lost the communication there. So, I would really, you know, recommend to have the FRF team get the project back and start running with it. Ahiaha.
Thank you, Delegate Helena N. Begay. Shuma. So, looking at my calendar, our next Navajia Tik Committee meeting is on the fourth, you know, on December. So, again, I heard many of the concerns regarding FRF Section 3 and 11 projects. So, we will add that as a report from FRF, DCD, and also OOC. So, for those that are here in attendance, just put that in your calendar, and that will be coming from Ms. Johnson, the invitation. Delegate Klaugh on adjournment.
Thank you, Speaker. I just want to express my gratitude to my colleagues for passing the legislation regarding our Navajo Nation telecommunications regulatory office as well as the commissioners. I do have a commissioner here in the gallery, and I'd like to take this time to recognize Mr. Nelson. If you could please stand. And then, also, we do have other commissioners, and I just want to say thank you for the support. Mr. Shorty was here as well. But just thank you for passing this legislation. This will decrease the commissioners from seven to five, and they have plenty of work ahead. They are working on the regulatory for telecommunications, the regulations for that. So, we do appreciate their work, and that's what I wanted to do, is just to acknowledge the commissioners. Thank you, Speaker, and I'll turn it back over to you, Ahiaha.
Thank you, Delegate Klaugh. And colleagues, any more questions, comments on adjournment? Delegate Norman Begay.
Good morning, everybody, and Speaker, all staff. And I saw Tony, the audience, and council. I don't know if this is in the right order of doing it or not, but I'd like to yield my time to the President to see what he thinks from his heart while he thinks the four minutes that I have left. In few words, what does he think that the people are saying about him? And what do we think about him from this side? I'd like to hear what he thinks now of what's going on. Speaker.
So, that is a time of four minutes and 22 seconds. Delegate Norman Begay, in our council rules of order, we only yield time delegates to delegates. So, another option, if you do want to hear from the President, I just suggest that we adjourn, and then we can enter into a leadership meeting with the President. We've done that before at Navajia Tik and also at council level. So, or since there's already a current motion on the floor already too. So, Delegate Norman Begay, if the President is open to that as well to meet following the adjournment, then we can do that too. We can have staff set up for that setting. Delegate Begay.
I'll take your speaker, because I want to hear, you know, what his thought. I want him to, since everybody's listening on Zoom and the internet, I want him to really kind of say his words in his own. That way, people hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Begay. I think many of my colleagues may feel the same as well, but the appropriate way through our rules, the way we can do it, is adjourn and then go into a leadership meeting setting. Just right following after. We'll give him the time to address the council. Ashpiga. Okay, so we got that. Colleagues, any more questions on adjournment? Seeing none. Two minutes on the board, colleagues, and please stay around. We'll give that opportunity to President Nigren to come to the presenter's table, and then we'll allow him, to give him that time to address the public and also the council here. And time, we do have nineteen in favor, zero opposed, with Speaker not voting. Colleagues, we will have finished our agenda for our special session today. And thank you, colleagues, again, for being here. We will adjourn our session at 11:00 a.m. However, we are going to go into a leadership meeting setting with the President. And colleagues, also a reminder. Many of our staff went out of their way, since we don't have an operating budget. They donated to provide food for each other, our staff and also our delegates. So, they did do, they organized a potluck, and that is starting at 11:00. And also Chair Jesus is also hosting us at the chapter. So, just keep that in mind, colleagues. I know our staff worked really hard and fundraised to put this dinner together. Okay, for, okay. So, that recommendation for forty-five minutes. Okay. Okay, for, okay, so that recommendation for 45 minutes. Okay, no question. We are still live streaming as well. And President Nigren, and we'll give you that time.
First and foremost, I want to say, and thank you for allowing me to say a few words. I know that we're all really busy, as you're aware. I'm glad that, same situation as well, too. So we got, I gotta get to noon. I know we have our own potluck across the street as well, too. You're more than welcome to come over. But first and foremost, I want to start off by saying thank you, Madam Speaker, esteemed delegates, and all, and the Navajo people listening, and all, and all the channels as well, too. And so first, I'm going to start off by saying, as you're probably aware, last month, in what I thought was a private conversation, I used language that I shouldn't have. In moments of great stress, we don't always act as our best selves. This was one such occasion for me. I let it be clear. I take full responsibility for my words. As Navajo people, our words are sacred. This is especially true for Nataanis who have been chosen by the Navajo people. So I apologize for using hurtful words or disrespectful words. As a Nataani, I apologize. It's true that we've had our disagreements. I haven't always agreed with each and every one of you, but please know this. I have the deepest respect for all of you. We are all public servants, and we are all striving to do the right thing for the Navajo people. I hope today that we can move forward and put some of our recent disagreements aside, particularly the budget behind us. The budget has separated us, but on the cusp of this holiday weekend, as we prepare to spend time with our families and our friends, and focus on our loved ones, and those that are truly most important to us, I am hoping that just as we all come together with our families, we can come together in this chamber. So today, the main reason why I came over earlier with the invitation of Hon. Vince James was to share a few words about how, obviously, the session ended, but my hope was to seek an amendment to Speaker Curly's legislation to fund my operations and my office, and the possibilities of the other branches that are seeking operation funds. And thank you for funding the Public Defender's Office as well. I know they really needed that. And just really tried to, try to continue to make sure that we have an operating budget. And I know that you've gotten letters this week and this morning as well, from me, from reducing my operating budget from 1.6 million to 1.1, 1.1, almost 1.2 million, 25% decrease as well, too. And as you guys are all aware, I'm in the same boat as you all are. I can't, we don't have any operating budget. And I know that dollars, Delegate, Hon. Amber Canes Bakroti talked about some dollars earlier. Those dollars are not being used. There's no, no dollars being allocated or anything like that, or spent. So everything's kind of frozen on my shop. And so really, I think that it's, we're going on two months. It's been, it's been, again, I think we're all feeling it. I think that we all represent our nation. We represented our communities, and that we're at a standstill when it comes to the Navajo Nation Council's operating budget, to my operating budget as well, too. So again, but the main thing, I think the, why I really came over, too, is just, just to apologize for the, for the inappropriate text messages that I did send, which I thought were private. But again, I take full responsibility, and I do apologize. I know it was during a very stressful time as well, too. So again, first and foremost, I just want you to know. I apologize, and I hold, hold all of you in the highest respect as well, too. So, but again, that, that, that's initially why I came over, was in hopes that I could secure an operating budget, because I don't have anything on my end. But again, here to talk, here to really talk, and figure out how do, how do we move forward, because we've got a lot of work to do. We've got a lot, a lot of work to do. I know that some of us, not all of us are guaranteed to be here after 12 months or so. But again, to continue to figure out how do we work together over these next several months, and really just make the most of it. And just, yeah, that's, that's the main thing. Apologize, and to see what are the possibilities of getting an operating budget, so that we can, we can move forward. Because like I said, I'm, I'm really having a hard time on my end across the street. So that's it, Speaker.
Thank you, President Nigren. And colleagues, I'm gonna go back to the floor. And we'll first go to Delegates Slater.
Thank you for coming over here, Mr. President. And I can't remember exactly what the quote is, but something about private thoughts, public truths. You know, the moment it's shared, it becomes a public truth. And so I think trying to hide behind saying that it's a private conversation diminishes the effect of the apology. But Speaker, can you turn on the President's microphone, because I want to engage in a conversation? And that is, in those messages, there is also attempted political firing of Wilson Stewart. And I would like to hear, I guess just briefly, why the President believes that that is an acceptable form of behavior to be directed, and how many other people the President has sought to fire for political reasons. And then I'll have follow-up on that.
Thank you, Hon. Hon. And I think when it comes to Wilson Stewart, I know he's in the audience. I know I just had an hour, hour-plus meeting with him earlier this morning. And again, I think that, well, I think of Wilson as the highest. I've known him many, many years, and I know that he's a good individual, and I think that he's been a leader. I think he was very instrumental in ARPA, and a lot of the regulations that have passed. So I've known Wilson a very long time, and I think that if, by any means, Wilson, if you were hurt, you know that I do apologize as well, too. So, but again, I think of you, your mom, your family. I've been to your homestead, I've eaten food with you at the dinner table, and a lot of those things. So again, from me to you, just I want you to know, I do apologize if you're offended by any means. And really, as we had a really good discussion this morning with you, Lisa, and the team, on how do we continue to move ARPA projects forward? How do we continue to make sure that the Triple R projects are going? And I think that that's just that level of respect that we have for each other, is that you as my big brother, you know, I've known you a long time, and just really, just want to continue to work together as hard as we can over the next year, and really, you know how I feel about you, and you know how I want to say it to you as well, too. So it's good, it's good to see you laugh at my, my corny jokes this morning. So it was good. And so I want to apologize for that, Wilson. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for bringing that up. And
Okay. I appreciate that, Mr. President, but the personal relationship is independent of the fact that you were trying to fire someone, not for personnel or performance reasons, but for political reasons, in that there is allegedly something damaging to the reputation of the administration. I would like you to address that before the people.
Thank you, Carl, Hon. Carl Slater. Definitely, I think I want to really keep this about the budget. And I think that I've issued my apologies, and I want to just
Mr. President, I appreciate that, and I'll stop my comments in a moment. But the fact of the matter is, there's immense distrust
Mr. Hon. Carl Slater, I thought this was a discussion. I don't want to talk, I just want to talk about the, the budget.
That's what I'm saying. I'm just gonna, I'm rounding my comments outright. Here's the, you know, you're gonna skirt the questions. But the, the fact of the matter is, there's an immense body of evidence of financial mismanagement right now, directed out of your office, and by principles that you directly oversee. And there are things that are moving through the courts. There are active Navajo Nation and federal investigations. And the fact of the matter is, it's very, very difficult for the people in this room, and the Navajo people, to trust you with additional money. I mean, when you see the Innovative Electric invoices, you know, that by itself should be disqualifying. And, you know, maybe there's an opportunity for you to explain yourself on those things here, but it sounds like that's not going to take place. So Speaker, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, for coming over here.
Yep. Thank you, Carl. I think anything that's under investigation or in the courts, I will definitely not discuss here on the floor. Thank you.
And going next to Chair Will McCarthy.
Okay, appreciate it. I know that you're here on the budget, so I wanted to ask staff, and I love a good visual, because it helps everyone understand. So President Nigren and your team here, I know I spend a lot of time educating staff, pointing to the law, pointing to the law and procedures, on the correct way to move forward with the budget. With, should I hear Mr. Beecher asking directly, how do you understand the budget process? How do you understand Title II appropriation laws? How do you understand the budget instruction manual? We're at the point that it's not clear to me if it's what else can be provided to your staff to make them comply with Navajo Nation law and policies, as evident yesterday in the Budget and Finance Committee, and the letter, President, that you sent out to all of our colleagues here on requesting an amendment without following Navajo Nation law, appropriation law. These are basic concepts that any high-level proposed acting Attorney General Beecher, in the capacity of Chief of Staff, in the capacity of Deputy Chief, in the capacity of your law firm having a contract, this is for staff who are getting paid a high rate, and that we are promised that you will provide efficient and effective services to our people, that collectively, as a committee and as a council, we have to continue to remind and guide staff how to develop budget forms. It's, it's November 25th, 2025, and we're still assisting the Office of the President and Vice President staff to properly develop budget forms following Navajo Nation law and policy. I'm not exactly sure what other mechanisms that this council can provide, what type of technical assistance we can provide to the Office of the President and Vice President, and your staff receiving elite salary, to create a proper budget with forms and submit it properly for amendment. This has been the constant ask for at least since last summer, June or July of last summer. Follow the laws, follow the policies, because you cannot expect for council to continuously perform your position and your jobs. Because if I'm performing your job, then what are you doing to earn that paycheck? Because that money can be diverted to our elders who are in need, to our college students who didn't know if they were going to get their FAFSA check, to our tribal school program that still needs additional dollars. It can be, it could go back to veterans who want additional services, and these are all supported by public comments. In our public comments, the two entities that were not supported for any additional funds was the Office of the President and Vice President, and the Navajo Nation Council. And so we have stayed firm in commitment that if there's any increased budget of the Navajo Nation Council, there is going to have to be clear measures and mechanisms, so that that funding moves forward and the accountability to the people. So for a visual, because I love a good visual, I asked myself, how did we get to this position where the Office of the President and Vice President's budget has doubled? There's no other program on Navajo Nation whose budget has doubled. So colleagues, if you look at the screen, and President Dr. Boo Nigren and your elite team here, what we start looking at is the first year in the administration was fiscal year 2023, and you inherited that budget, and came before the council and the committee. We have memos from former Chief of Staff Patrick Sandoval requesting and stating that you need $750,000 to continue to provide critical services and operating for the Office, Office of the President and Vice President. So if that was developed, I believe in May, so yes, May, June, July, August, September, for five months, you said you needed an additional $750,000. So five, so that's $25,000 more a month that you needed to operate. And that was approved by the council. There was also additional money for the Daltech program, and one more other executive program. Why that is important, President, to understand, is that's a supplemental. So when we saw your budget for fiscal year 2024, you can see by percentage that you started using your budget to increase your personnel. So you went from a 70.1% to an 88.5%. So that's a huge jump, but there's no approved organizational chart. There was no changes in performance measures. And so you have to justify why the increase in personnel with the status quo staying the same. So I want to go back to then 2025, because this is when we start getting into a CR. You'll see that there has been a jump, because there was changes to, to put more money into your operating, and your personnel kind of balanced out. And that's why we're saying your budget continues to increase. So staff, if you could do the next graph, because we started grafting out, then the proposed amendments. So let's go back to this. I won't invoice anyone. I'm giving you this pro bono, I guess, missing out on my turkey. But thank you for the invitation. So let's look at this year, and how your budget has been calculated. There's still an increase from last year, from last fiscal. You were at 4.9. This year, you're at 5.5 million. So you have, you have received another $600,000. But internally, and I don't know how the decisions are made, that's why I've asked your staff, do you understand the process? Do you have, you know, the, the updated documents here? Here's a copy of the BIM. Here's a copy of the law. You have an increase, and you then increased it, your personnel, which is now 94.9% of your budget. And that's where we're at. There has to be some accountability to justify. So when we're asking for that, when I'm asking for that, that's what I'm looking for. Because you do have internally the, the ability, because you have more in your budget. So we'll even be fair and take out that $250,000 for K-9 search and rescue, you still receive more funding to, what, like at least $400,000? I don't know. So you have, you have received more this year. I'm not sure how that's been, through your advisors, conveyed to you, President, but I thought in the, in the essence of coming here, talking things out, this is what I see. And so the other two graphs are your requested amendment, and that was just over $7 million. So you could see that would, so if you start it with like about a $2.8 million budget, that would more than three, that would be like an increase of like 300%, which is unheard of. And so then there was another second, or there was an amendment request, and I believe this was in, I don't know if these were the emergency, or, I'm sorry, I could, I could get that information, but but the amendment is, my understanding, that was withdrawn. But even when you're reducing your amount, it's still over the threshold. And so when we started examining and staff helped, started examining your newest request, this was prior to this weekend, I believe, maybe, there's so many things happening, you're still above that threshold of asking for 6.4 million, when literally last year you were allocated 4.9 million. So there has to be justification there. Oh, and I'm corrected, thank you. This 4.9 million last year also had a supplemental of about $250,000 for another nonprofit to do work for workforce development. I'm going to kindly ask, give us that breakdown on how your office utilized that funding, because we want to make sure it went to workforce development nonprofit. So President, I wanted to give you a clear picture. I'm not sure if your team is able to pull this up for you on how you, how you analyze, but in reading your memos, it's, it's, it's very frustrating on my end to see at what point, what information, other than our staff doing the work of your staff or myself as a delegate doing the work of your staff, to me, that's unacceptable and will not be tolerated. And that's why I'm going to reexamine who's there, who's doing what. And this is critical information, so I hope it's helpful for my colleagues. Y'all receive this, if we could post this, you know, on our website, so everyone can look at the numbers, because I think looking at the numbers is great. And, and that's what I wanted to bring up to this conversation, because you did say you wanted to focus on the budget. So I do want to focus on that. And I, and I will continue to ask DHR for those approved organizational charts according to the BIM. That's how you fund a position. And really, President, at this time, and if your staff didn't let you know, there was a memo signed by your then-Chief of Staff, Chris Beecher, Controller, OMB, Mr. Bial and Ms. Tadi, your direct, your Division Director, that the Budget Instruction Manual this year stated, if you have someone hired in that position, you have to fund them at the full rate of 2088. That memo went out, but we still saw budget forms that were approved by your internal process that did not completely fund filled positions, and that created the need for many amendments, because the requirement is you have to fund those positions first. And so if your team would have helped you, a lot of this, I think, communication collaboration could potentially increase in the future. And I also want to then end by saying, our hope, and if your team is not telling you this, we invite them to every meeting, it's public, we really need to look at a two-year budget so that we're approved and programs can move forward, so nobody has to deal with an unknown. Or at that time, then, if an employee, there won't be a budget for them, then they have a whole year to, you know, transition out. And also, President, that helps us, because right now we're just on projected revenue. And 70 or 70, you know, a huge amount of that is no longer relying on oil and gas. It's relying on the amount of money we project to make in the market. And that's why financial security is so important, because we have projects that are bonded, we have a bond rating. And if our revenue is determined on the market, we need to continue to have strong investment policies and who will make the decision on behalf of Navajo Nation. So I'm bringing up hopefully some solutions. I appreciate that you're here. I appreciate my colleagues for being here. Delegate Norman Begay requesting that we engage in this conversation. It's very helpful. And I'll also say, President, if you have questions for myself, please let me know. I've, I've asked your staff, you know, what is the best process? That does sound very ambiguous right now, but what if we could, you know, like you have that template to have, request a meeting for you? If your staff can develop something like a request from a delegate on specific issues, like that kind of form, I could fill that out, but as long as someone's tracking it, I, I think that will be very helpful. So I wanted to bring in those solutions. Appreciate your presence here. I think collectively, we have to continue to come to the table for our Navajo people. I, I'm not coming to the table here to support any one position, but there has to be a greater accountability with your staff. I, I hold my LDA to a high accountability, and I will share with you, President, the amount of work that they have to complete, that it should be an executive function. To the point now, she's doing project management for all of the chapters. And so those are, those are, again, budgets that we give out to executive programs, and, and they're not meeting the needs of our people. And so how do we create those opportunities? And I think, I think I'll leave it there. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Hello, Crowdy. Thank you for expressing that, because I was thinking the same thing too. So I really want to say thank you for that and thank you for those ideas and definitely looking forward to trying to figure it, to have, to have those discussions with my team as well. And I think one of the things you did mention too is, yes, I want to try to get an update on what didn't happen with, I think, that nonprofit organization from Salt Lake City and see what, see what's going on from the previous budget. We'll try to work on that information. And then the other thing too is, I look forward to making sure that we roll out that K-9 as well too, because I know, obviously, right now, everything being in court, everything's locked up. So not much we can do about that, because as you listened in personally, you, it was completely talked about in court. So again, trying to just maintain the status quo, but I think once that's done, looking forward to showing up at, in Four Corners and getting that grant allocated. But at the same time, we should be preparing for it too, because as I mentioned earlier, I want it to happen and it is going to happen. And I think that what we should do is you continue to work with Yolanda, the organization, get, 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 get those documents in line. I'm saying like, let's get the grant process going. And so that when court's done, we can, we're not, we're not waiting at the last minute saying, hey, court's done now that no longer, no longer anything, let's, let's try to move some of these dollars around. So again, let's really prepare for it, because I want to do it, because I was actually thinking about rolling it out the other week too. And then I was like, hey, well, this is a lot of what's being talked about in court, so I don't know if you can really change it, right? So again, I look forward to, I know if they're listening, let them know that you and I will be rolling out that amazing program and making sure that they can have access to the vehicles, the dog food and some of the supplies that's really needed for that organization. But again, we got to really get everything prepared so that I think the day, the day after the court thing is done, you and I should be able to roll that whole thing out. Documents should be ready to go for DOJ, because again, it's rolling out a grant to a non-Navajo Nation organization. So I think that if we can really prepare for that, that'd be cool. Look forward, looking really forward to that as well too, so. But the other thing is, you did mention, my, again, as you, as you well aware, Delegate Crowdy was, I got 15 new positions over the past year, and so I had to move a lot of operating money. And so that's not what's shown in the, in the previous, previous year. So again, you just take, just, just do some math on 15 positions, on whatever average salary of my whole office is, and then multiply it by 15, and you're going to get a number that I didn't have accounted for in this year's budget, because I got $0 for 15 new positions. And so I had to figure out where to find $15 for 15 new positions, right? And so if you just do quick math, you'll know, you'll notice why it went up dramatically, but I tried to keep the, the operating dollars, you know, like 25% higher, but now I've reduced it down to by 25%. But again, a lot of it went to personnel. And as you mentioned earlier, from 70, from 70 something percent to 86%. I think that's what you mentioned. So again, that, that increase in personnel, maybe 12% of it, maybe 13% of it is those 15 positions. And so again, it wasn't me trying to hide anything. It's just, when you get 15 positions with $0, right? How, like, how am I supposed to fund it? And so the only way to fund it was to allocate dollars to those positions. And so yes, I probably did increase it 3 to 3%. I don't know, I'm not doing the math, but again, that's, again, that's where most of the money went. But hopefully, that kind of clears things up. And as you mentioned yourself, 250,000 of that was for the K-9 unit. So we're thinking about 300,000 and some change. So again, overall, I think that, that hopefully puts things into perspective as well too. So again, and then, but yeah. See, I agree, we need more money for FAFSA. I know that one of the things, I think maybe you can help me. I know there's some RDC members that are here as well. I know that we just recently met with the Tucson Electric Group and the right-of-way payments that are coming out. I proposed to Mike Colonna and his team that we should move half of that, which would be about 55 million, into scholarships, into the Scholarship Trust Fund, because we continue to have a lot, a lot of students coming in and out. So if we, I know the right-of-way, I think the, what was negotiated was 110 million. Obviously, that still has to go to RDC and they'll have the final approval. But I think that if you, we can get your support to say, hey, let's put half of that away and put that into scholarships, I'm all for it. But again, that's RDC's, RDC's job. But again, that 110 million, it'd be cool to put half of, half of it away into scholarships. And again, I agree, I was just out in our elders, our veterans. I was just out in Tuba City, almost got stuck in the mud, and the roads are terrible, the bus routes are terrible. And I think that's where we got to put hundreds of millions of dollars into our road maintenance program. So again, I will support you 100% if you can allocate 150 to 200 million in regional offices so that we can address the bus routes, the muddy roads. All of us get those same complaints every day about our roads. So if you introduce a piece of legislation for 150 to 200 million, have regional offices so that we can address the bus routes and all those other things. I think that, that would be amazing. I, I would totally support that. But again, and then to our elders, right? I know that we got a Veterans Trust Fund that's got, that has well over 250 million. We should have an Elders Trust Fund too, you know, a bigger one, or, or try to increase some of the, some of the dollars that we put into that, like, because again, a lot of our, again, you, I, I know you're a champion of our elders. A lot of our elders don't have social security, because they've never had a job. They've been sheep herders, they've been stewards of our lands, so they don't get benefits from the federal government. A lot of them only live off $150 a month. You can't survive on $150 a month, because they wanted to stay home and take care of sheep and cattle and our livestock and our land. So if there's a way, I know you're on the Budget and Finance Committee, if there's a way to put some money for our elders, that'd be, that, that would be so amazing, especially the ones that didn't put any money in for social security and stuff by not going the, the normal route as well too. So again, all your ideas have been wonderful. But again, my, my biggest difficulty, again, I'm finding, this morning, the, the, the budget was printed out for me and I kind of had to study it on my own. And so that's the only, the reasoning, I was like, okay, so what's the problem here? Why, why, why am I seeing numbers out there that, that feel like inflated? Because I started to ask those same questions that you ask, I started asking those questions too. I said, why, why are we higher, what's going on? And, and then I looked at it, I go, well, personnel went up because we got 15 new positions that had $0, and we had to move money into those 15 positions. And even if you did 15, 15 positions times, let's say, 70 or 80,000 average, you're well over a million dollars. And so again, and then that's well over what I'm asking for in operating. That's probably why, that's why we're asking for that additional money, because we, again, again, I, I, and then even the number that I proposed for operating, I don't even know if that's enough for, for, for the positions that I have. And so, so again, 1 million for that amount of personnel, because I, then, I did study, I think, the, the legislation that you guys passed. I know just compare the, the 10 offices, operating $6.5 million, you know what I mean? It's just like, how, like, how do, how do I, like I said, my, I think even, I might be coming, yeah, we'll see, we'll see. If you get, if we get it approved, I don't know if it's enough, but we'll try to figure out how to stretch it, since, since we're getting good at it now, because we got potlucks going all over the place. Maybe that's something that's good for all of us, to figure out how do we be more responsible as well too. So again, the, let's see, the, but yeah, I think when it comes to your staff and just, sorry for your frustration too. Oh, 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 what I, what I do know is when they put this packet together, they did get an OMB letter as well. And I know that one of the things that I caught was on the budget forms, it said Navajo Nation approve original budget. So I noticed that things that went through, through the amendments weren't on there. So I studied it, and I noticed when I looked at your budget forms, it didn't have the previous Navajo Nation approve original budgets as well too. So, so we made sure that when we crafted my budget forms, that they were included, and we, we seek the OMB letter as well too. And the only, I think the only letter that we never got, we've been asking for a couple of days, was the letter from OOC, because I know that you should have that full packet together before you submit it. And then, and then I think from what I'm being told, that, I don't know if you guys got your letters, but we didn't get, we didn't get our letters, and that's kind of how we went about it as well too. Just so, just so you know, we're always trying to, trying to follow the process as well too, so. And if we're not, apologize for it. We didn't get the OOC letter, but at least we got the BIM letter and we made sure that our, our numbers on the forms were correct as well, so. Thank you.
Thank you, President. And I'm going to go two at a time, colleagues. So first, we'll do Chair James and then followed by Chair YDino Charles Newton. Then I'll go back to the President. Chair James.
Hi, Nana Kodo, Speaker, Member of the 25th Navajo Nation Council. Do Nana Adesha Che. Che Che Kodo, Niket Ixti Halaet Aod Aya. Do, Aye Den Lnao Do, Ake Da Di Ti Ta La, Jokhot A A. Kodo Bahal Na Egi Be. Nell Ixtan Edi Shlih, Shanaa Da Kodo. Akoh, Nlpa Huzen Ogo A A Di, Nabek Iya Tye, Do Counsel, Nabek Iya Tye Is Your Oversight. Akoh, A A Nlpa Huzen, Ado, Ahaj O Pa, Ako Yee A A. Adet, Nabek Iya Tye, Beniya Yaha Ne Khah, Nkiliha Nanta Akoh. Akoh, A Anee, Juan Da Lne Shiki, Yat Eh Ho Ban Sete Khe Stow, Benan Shiat Eh Ho De Llo E. E Kodo Pa Eji Da Do Le. Kodo Pa Ziz Da, Haja O, A A Banj O Khah Do Le. Jokhot A A Inle De, Nahat An Lini Ki, Pa Alte, Zile. Itan A A A A Facebook, Do Di Social Media, Seki Itaten. Do A A Hhat A A Ilch E Da Ilon, Ado Press Release, Do Khatat A A Do Be Ilch E I Ilon. Ye, Ye Da Alon Hinat Ani Dei Khai Zile Akoh. Njono Nahat Ayat Eh Iki, Pet Zili Ki, Akhot A A Ye Da Ilah. Akwa Eki A H A Pe, Be Niket Ixti. Halaet Eh I, Nahat Ahaki Inl Ila. Jokhot A A H A Pe, Che 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 Pe Niket Ixti Hla Eko. Akoh, Haja O, Kodo Da Yixn Il Ido, Kwa Eki Sa, Nlini, Ajanshi Lha Ho, Big Eda Ashtiki Ndeh. Be Ilch E Yada Jil Tye O, Jokhot A A, Nahat Ani Itle. Akoh, Di De, Resida, Aja E E, Big Eden Lni Do, Nda. Division of Human Resources, Seki Dez, I Do Le, Jokhot A A, Naal Soosha Den La. Ado, Kodo E E, Legislation Nlini Be Ke Nia. Akoh, Kwanzaa De Ho Ljixte. Ms. Resida Tari, Do Staff Nlini Ki. What is the actual, actual Personnel Directory Listing or the Personnel Vacant Position Listing? The vacant current positions that are filled? A De, Nha Prinaw Inle, At President's Office. Jokhot A A, Che, Yin Shkeed Akoh. Akoh, A A, Adet Bahal Na Egi, A A, Bilshahna, Nelo E Becht Eh. Ad Go Go, A A Ba Akon Sino, Na Ba Akon Sino, A A. Since I don't have, we don't have, as the council, we don't have a copy of your current vacant and filled position with this executive staff assistant. A De, Do Bahal Zen Da Le Do Ya Ash Ho Da. Akoh, As Your Oversight, Kodo, Nani Tle Akoh. Akoh, I Know That All 32 Of Your Executive Staff Assistant Position, A A Do, 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 A A Hhat A A, Nanda Lne Shiki. A A Art, Choe Edo, Aiden Da Anne Shta. I Know For A Fact That You Have Quite A Bit Of Vacant Position Out Of That 32 Executive Staff Assistant That You Currently Have. Budget It. Di De Budget, Nikit Iktui La. Back, um, Budget Be, Be Landa Itle, Heta. Ako, Shichay, Di, 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 Listen, Nikibay Ashke, It's Part Of Your Budget. In, In That Budget, You Have Five Staff, Executive Staff Assistant That Are Being Paid Over $100,000. And Then You Have Four Staff, Executive Staff Assistant That Are Making Over $90,000. You Have Eight Executive Staff Assistants That Are Making Over $80,000. You Have Twelve Executive Staff Assistant Making Over $70,000. Then You Have Three Executive Staff Assistant Making Over $60,000. Ako, Eh Hine Zogo, That's Thirty-Two Staff, But Not All Of Your Executive Staff Assistant Position Title Are Not Filled. And As Your Oversight, You Had That Opportunity Today And Yesterday To Come Over And Say, Shohei Shenand A, Since I Don't Have These Position Filled Since October First, Do Kujin. Why Can You Please Transfer That Personnel Vacant Positions From The Executive Staff Assistant Over To Operation Funds For Me? Jokot A Eh, Ahil Na An Nish Wudliya. And With The Current Numbers That I Know Of Your Vacant Executive Staff Assistant, Currently Today, With The Current Vacant Position, That Will Give You Over What You've Been Asking Us, The 1.6 Million Dollars. If You Ask Your Oversight, Which Is Nabik Iya Tye Us, To Transfer Those Executive Staff Assistant Personal Funds That Are Vacant Position To Your Operation, That Will Give You Over 1.6 Million Dollars. Kode De A, Ta Na Ho Ljix. Budget Ba Na Ho Int Eh, Were Already Done, With First Quarter Next Month Is December. Ako, Akwa Eki Eh A A, Halaet A Do Ha Jyo, Big It Iti Hita La. Halaet A Do Ha Jyo, Nahaba Akun Zinta. Ako, Okot A, Nl I Go Go, La't O, Ha Yu Beso Nah, Deno Ta Toj Your Operation. Jokot Eh? Ako, Di De Executive Staff Assistant Eh A Anne, Kodo Beso, Kohot E Da, Neit Nal Eh, Bellah Ho, Na Na Da Si Nal. Eh A Anne, Eden O Go Go Eh Di Executive Staff Assistant, Go Ne Eh, Tsko Beso, Be Ja In La Akho, Eh Don Hiit Ii Da Be Shpahas A, Anne Ni Tlini. Eh Anne Int Eh? Ako, Kodo Eh A, Na'O Khah Eki. Ha Jyo, Nl I Go Go Di Your Executive Staff Assistant Iki. Eh De Ha Jyo, Nanl On, Kodo, Nhitato, Na Na A. To Go Back Into Executive Fun, Uh, Operation Funds For Yourself, For Your Team. And That's Gonna Be More Than 1.8 Million Dollars, Shenand A. Jokot A Eh A, Beniya Di De Your Current Vacant Listing, A H A Yinchkeed, Miss Taari Don, Hich, Shichay Ki Lehta. Ako, Kodo, Kodo Be, Adne Benj, Chastee, O Shin Anne, Akhot A Eh A, Ben Hilna Ha Dri Nah, Son Ha Jopa, Eh Ya Eh Be, Benj Ha Disse, Akho. Ako, Sheeh Eh Hwata A, Be Nanash Eh, You Have That Option To, To Do That. Ha Jopa Ahunzo Eh Ashon, Ta Da, Na'Iliya Do Leh Int Eh, To Transfer Those Personnel Funds. Eh Da Na, Shinamana, Be Landa Si, Tling Do Leh Int Eh, A Do, Kad Nana, We Would Make That Transfer For You, She, Do Leh Int Eh, On Hilch Ina, Nhilch Ina Niya Akho. Ako, Eh A, Koda At Eh Go A Ashon De, Shenand A, Abans In A Case. Nikhi Kojus Speaker, Adi Kiya, Staff Juan Da Nesh, A Do Ned Eh Nlpa Hozzen, Di Kodo, Legislative District Assistant, LD A, Dan Nlini Ki, Eh, Alla An Juan Da Nesh, Akho. Ako, Okot A Eh A, Nil Enle Akho. Ako, A Da Eh A, Hwata A Eh A, Nabanses Case, Nle Akho. Nana Na Ki Go Ne Eh, Anne Di Ya, Na, Tsko Alta Si, Tling, A Do, Kodo, Legislation Number 0249-25. Attorney General, Ajin Do Ltcheh, No, Legislation Niltos, Appointment Of Chris Beecher. Ako, Kodo Be Shpahas A, Anne, Tlini Ki, You Saw The Vote. Ako, Nana Kodo, Nikis Speaker, Nlini Ki, Aton Den Altsos, Altsko Khaidal He. Before Our Speaker Could Certify That Legislation 0249-25, You Already Sent An Email To Us At 11:02, Anne Di Ya, 11:02 AM On Hich Ina Inla, That You're Gonna Reappoint Chris Beecher To The AG Position Again. Di Alba De Shnech, Chee Chee Nikit Ixti Halaet A, Eh A, Nenahat A. Kodo Eh A, A Da, Nell Ixtan Eh Huilia, Shohei Di La, Do Bohone Tsa Da. Jokot A Eh A, Kodo Be Shpahas A, Anne Ni Tlini Eh A, Na'L Ini Di I Iliya. A Do Nana, Aba Iltsa De, Nathne Heather, Das Da Ha Da, Lto Na'Altsos, A Da DOJ's Opinion, Nch Ekui La, Do Nikit Ekodalia, Be Shpahas A, Anne Ni Tlini. Ye Ne'Kode, Eh A Ya Eh, Nikit Ika Ina Inla, At 11:02 AM To Reappoint Chris Beecher To The Attorney General Seat. Do Beilt Eh Da, Shenand A Eh? Ha Ho She, Ha Jyo, Altsa Do, Nil, Jot Ikidi, No Eh Be Na'Hi Dilkid, Akho. Di K'Ad Akot A, Na Inla, Le A, A Do Hana Halji, Shenad A? Ako, Ye Go, Ban Sine Case, A Do Le Eh, Altsa Ashon De, Shichay. Anne Di Ya, Ko De, Adan, Ind A Do Ashon, Shen, It Oht Al, Do Okot A, Chasi. Yat Eh Ho, Nhan, Sis Case, Be Shpahas A, Anne, No'Lini. Deno, Anne De, Njono Ben, Hich Iktui, Ze Eh, Ta Be La'Ji, Kodo, 11:02 Ya Da Email, Ina Inla. Do Beilt Eh Do, Chee Nikit Ixti Halaet A, Nenahat A La. Jokot A Eh A, Shaba Akun Ns, And Do Leh, Shichay. Ako, Ha Shid A Eh A, Kodo, Altsa Nan, Le Do Leh. Hat Eh Ki Da Le, Nikit Eneh, Let A Do O Yo, Edil Hana Ho, Nl Tsah Eh? A Do Le, Let A Do O, Bet Enl Gis, Ha Jyo, Ban Sine Case, Dan Hit Eno, Nikia Da Hazli. Eh Beniya, Nikit Si Ra'Ho Lo, Shiyadu, Shae We, Sitsui, Shenale, Shichay, Dan Hit Eno, Nikia Da Hazli, Akho. Di Shji, Dat Ah Tit A, Hwata A, Achatsa, Diil Zin. Ha Jyo, Shichis, Be Na'Shado Leh, Be Encht El, Njono Naso, Hinshna Do Leh, Yat Eh Ho Sai, Disseh, Ikidi Nido, Acha, Tsodil Zeno, Kunza De, Nikhil Ta'Well, Jiix, Akho. Ako, Di K'Ad Kona Ne, Inla. Nachy Da's, Ed Oya Hananat Eh? Aga Di Ta'He Da's, Ed Dahto, Ako Ta'Adats, Unha'N Ban Sine Case, Jok, Koda At Eh Wach Eh, Be Nikit Ixti, Akho. Ako, Ashon De, Altsa Ban Sine Case, So, Unda Eh, Hwata A, A Do Le Eh Eh, Nikita To, Nihneh, Akho Shenad A, Nlini Ki. Akho Eh Do, Alk Ihu It Ato, Altsa Da, Denil, Nih Da, Eh, T'eh, Nle, Itchi, Nsa'Naj, Eda'Jit Eh, Do Ikidi Nida. A De Ye, Do Zag, Khot A Ba Joo, Khath Do Leh, Jokot Eh? Nikidina'eh, Nle De, T'eh Ha Jopa, A De, Ns'in. Ha Jyo Do Leh, Danzo, Chee Ta Dez, I. Ako, Okot A Eh A, Kodo, Nch Iha Disse, Nana, Ako Di Ashon De, Lto, Altsa, Altsa Eh Di Tlil, Lto? Your, Your, Your Third Appointment Of Chris Beecher, Na'L I Iliya, Do DOJ Opinion, Do Na'L I Ila. Ako, Okot A Eh A, Nch Iha Ssi, Do Leh, Nana, Shichay, Do Nana, Na'Esan, Na'Altsine, Bill, Lto, Njono, Kesme, Shiyadu. Go Ne Eh, Hol Jyship, Ben Na, Njono, Na Da'Oh Tlil. A Do, Njono, She, T'eh Ya Eh, Naso, Na De Ini, Khath Do Leh, Jokot Eh, Akho. Khot A, Nch Iha Ssi, Do Leh, Shichay. Ahia Ha, Do Da'Ho Liado, Na'O Khah Eki, A Eh De, Bedel Ne. Ha'No, Da'Oh Khot A, Nad Ani, Da, Tle Li Ki, Ye Nikit Iya Da'L Tye, Ndeh Eh? Kwe Ho'Lo Go, Betz A De, Jok Gallo. Khot Ha De, La'Ho'Lo Go. Okot A Eh, Ye, Chiyadah Tye, Ndeh Eh, Beni, Na'Eh Be, L'Chasne, Kunza De, Akho. Ako, Da'Ho Liya, Shichay, Do Na'Esan, Do Na'Altsine, Ba, Ha Jyo, Ba, It, Bas Ns'in, Do, Ha Jyo, Eh Ya Eh, Ba Nan Na'Lo? Akho De, Na Dan Chi'it O, Ha Yu Go, Nahaz A. Eh De Ba Ha Jyo, Nah A, Ha Jyo, Nahat Ah Eki, Inns'in. Khot A Eh Be, Nch Iha Ssi, Do Leh, Ahia Ha, La, Shenand A, No'Lini Ki, Do, Kodo Speaker, A Do Nana, President Nygrin, Khot Do, Shelt Ha Ssin, Lto, Khot A, Nch Iha Ssi, Do Leh. Ahia Ha, Thank You.
Thank you, Chair James. Uh, Chair Gina Charles Newton?
Uh, thank you, Speaker. And, um... Boo, thank you for coming before this council to, to address us, um, for the benefit of yourself. And just to be clear, I think, I don't think that that was a really sincere apology. I think that if it was a sincere apology, you would've came over sooner and you wouldn't be apologizing at a time when you need money. I'm not sure if you heard, um, that we're gonna be seeing a decline in revenue in the next few years. So if you didn't hear it, just know that the Controller did report to Budget and Finance, there will be a decline in revenue, revenue in the next few years. Your slogan is "Think For The Future." Have you taken that into consideration with this budget request that you're asking? How is that thinking for the future? I guess, I'm, I'm really disappointed in just your actions. And, and I've said it on this floor and I'll say it again, that I'm ashamed that I campaigned for you. I regret it. Right now, the people are asking council not to give you any more money. We get phone calls, text messages, Speaker's office has gotten phone calls, even when you ask the people to call and ask them to increase your budget, two people asked, they just said, just give him more money. The rest said, no. And I think that what Delegate Slater stated at the very beginning is true. And I just want to, you know, reemphasize that our revenue is gonna be declining and you're sitting here asking for 1.1 million on top of what you already got, your 5.5. And, you know, I sat through the, the court hearing and I, you know, your lawyers painted a picture as if you guys are in need right now, because you guys only received, I think, 250,000 in operations. And they have yet, and you have yet. You have not told the Navajo people how much your personnel has increased. You have not thanked council for not questioning that request that you made. Because the truth is, your personnel has increased, we just saw the graphs. You can't dispute that, you can't deny it. And I'm, I'm one who shows it all the time on Facebook, I show it in black and white, I show your budget request, I've showed the letters that came from Beecher, where you guys have asked just specifically for personnel, which Budget and Finance gave to you. You asked for personnel, we gave it to you. And I think what Delegate Cruddy stated is, is very true in that we're always doing the work for your staff. I don't know what they do, I mean, right now I'm seeing them in the gallery and I'm like, wow, they get paid over 60,000 dollars to be, what, your cheerleaders in the gallery? What work are they doing? What exactly are they doing? And I think that's what the Navajo people want to know. You have 37 staff right now that are devoted just to you, just to you. That doesn't even include your division directors who've been appointed by you, just your staff in your office every day, 37. What do they do? On social media, the only thing that I see them doing is handing out food. Paying them over, what, 70,000 dollars to hand out food? That you didn't get, you didn't apply for a grant to get that food, that food was donated. And you take the credit as if you were the one to go out and seek these fundings. So, I mean, to me, it's very clear, and I think the majority of my colleagues here, you know, you're not gonna see that 1.1 million increase. You're just not. Because right now, even though you state that we, as delegates, you know, we, we're elected by our communities, I know Shiprock Community is telling me, no. And we are the largest community on the Navajo Nation. Your 37 appointed staff, I want to know, where is their job description? So I know what they do. What is your reason for paying them the salary that they receive when there are Navajo Nation employees making far less who are doing more? We had a legislation yesterday to establish a minimum wage, to pay our employees at a minimum 14 dollars and 70 cents. 14 dollars and 70 cents, you were not sitting up there with us advocating for your Navajo Nation employees. You took the credit for social services getting that increase when that was the work of council giving them that increase. The increase that our employees are seeing right now, that was approved by council. The only thing that you did was sign it. Boy, howdy, that pen must be heavy, you need employees making more than 70,000 dollars to help you hold up that pen. I want to know, maybe if you give me a good reason, number one, why you have 37 staff? I want to know what your 37 staff do. I want to know, I want a copy of their job description. I want to, I want you- I want to, I want you to tell the Navajo people why you pay them that much money. Because right now, we have people who are in need, who are just not understanding why this whole issue is happening. You don't need any more money. Period. I've taken the liberty with the help of Speaker and staff. During the budget, I had a plan, I had an amendment, actually. I'll be very honest with you. I had an amendment ready to go where I was going to reduce your staff's salary to make the same as our LDAs across the board, your appointed staff. And I have it right here. That's where your operations is at. It's very simple. Think for the future. Think for our children. Think for our grandchildren. Save money. Stop spending. Right here. Taleh, I hope you're looking right here. I've got it. So we did the work for you and your staff were making over $70,000 a year. If you cut their salary fourth quarter, because, I mean, I think realistically, I don't think you're going to be, you know, reelected. So fourth quarter, you can start laying off your staff. You can end that, find 1.2 million. Your fourth quarter. If you cut their salary. We did not touch your salary, obviously. We can't do that because by law, Vice President's salary, we didn't touch that. Your legal counsel, so Bittah's salary is good to go. And then your Chief of Staff, we didn't touch that. Everybody else, we reduced it. Your fourth quarter. That's where your operations is at. And in case you didn't know, if you read the BIM, it allows for you to move money from your personnel to your operations. So it's doable. We have, right now, you know, our LDAs who you didn't even think about. These are Navajo people. Think for the future. Think for their family. Think for their future. That's your slogan, right? And yet, you, without a blink of, I don't know, just, you just got rid of them. I, that's why to me, I don't, you know, that wasn't an apology. And my joke right now is, you know, because sometimes people get my name wrong and I say, "I'm okay." I'm okay with that. If you want, you can even call me scumbag. You came here because you want more money. That's the bottom line. But like I said, you don't need any more money. Notice how I said, "You do not need any more money." As a mother, we teach our children the difference between need and want. Need is something that you have to have to survive. Want is something that you, you know, if there is enough resources left over, maybe we can address that want. So, a lot of our elders right now, a lot of, you know, our veterans, the people right now who are in need right now, they have a small budget and they make do with what they have. And you're sitting here and you're asking for more money. I just, I don't, I can't understand that. And I just feel like, I don't know what you can get done in these last few months that you have left that you couldn't get done in three years, in the past three years. And I think that's why this council keeps coming back to the fact that we just, we cannot justify to the people giving you any more money. So I propose at this time, cut your staff's salary on the fourth quarter. Cut their salary. And again, the work is already done. It's right here. I'll be happy to scan it and send you a copy. And, you know, like, and then I'll leave it up to your staff to do the, I guess, whatever's left. At this point, the only thing that's left is to sign it. I'm pretty sure they can do that. But I cannot and will not vote green to give you any more money, especially with all the money that's missing now that you haven't accounted for. And to me, I can't take that to the Navajo people and say, "Yeah, 24 million is missing." Yeah, there are all these invoices that were coming in for trips away from your family. And we gave him an additional 1.1 million. It's hard right now, having to explain to our Navajo people why we even approved an increase in your budget. Because realistically, you did get an increase in your budget. Numbers don't lie. Black and white papers don't lie. You got an increase. Ahdeh. Make do with what you have. Think for the future. Think for our children and our grandchildren. We need to save for them. We need to find a way to bring in more revenue, to increase our contracts. And I think right now, it's just very clear. You're not getting that money. I'm just going to be real with you. You're not getting that money. I don't know any delegate who has entertained this notion of giving you more money. They might tell you that, "Yeah, yeah, we're going to do it, we're going to do it." But I just don't think that that's going to happen. So what I'm asking you is, think for the future and look at your budget again. Be a part of the budget process. Come, come over and talk to us. Don't do it after we're getting ready to adjourn. Think for the future. Please, think for the future. So at this time, again, I'll, Speaker, if we can get this maybe scanned and sent out to the 25th Navajo Nation Council as an option, send it over to Boo and his staff. All it needs is signature. And it's just taking money from your fourth quarter, which technically, we did that to fund our LDAs. Because to us, saving one Navajo job, we sleep better at night. Saving that one Navajo job. So if we can get this sent out, and then, again, it is an option. And I think that it certainly, I hope that it makes it to the court, that we've given him an option to consider. Because we're leading, council is leading with their actions by doing exactly this, to fund our LDAs. Think for the future. Thank you.
Great, thank you Chair Eugene Charles Newton. So that will be a legislation. We do have a draft right here. If any of my colleagues are willing to sponsor it. It is an option where, but it would have to go through Navajo Nation Council. That is an option. Again, I believe I did state it that in a memo that I did send over to President, I think, last week. So that was an option that was already highlighted for reallocation. And going, I'm going to go back to President Nigren. And then following that, we do have Delegate Nez, Chair Jesus, and also still Chairman Arusso and Delegate Tol still in queue. President Nigren.
Yeah, thank you Speaker. First, I'll start with Che. Thank you for your comments. I really want to just kind of, I'm just going to read this. I know you're asking about Chris Beecher, so I'm just going to read it. I know some thoughts have gone into it. Dear Mr. Beecher, I am recommending you and appointing you as Attorney General for the Navajo Nation in accordance with 2 NNC subsection 1962B, which states that the Attorney General and Deputy Attorney General shall be appointed by the Navajo, shall be appointed by the Navajo Nation Council upon the recommendation of the President. It is important that the position of Attorney General, the highest law enforcement position of the Navajo Nation, not be vacant for any period. Allowing a vacancy for even a short amount of time could lead to disruptions in administration of justice and law across the Navajo Nation and jeopardize ongoing litigation of vital importance to the Navajo Nation. Any attempt to create such a vacancy would pose immediate and grave risk to the Navajo Nation and cannot stand. Therefore, your appointment as Acting Attorney General is effective immediately. This need to be, avoid, this need to avoid any disruption consistent with the statute cited above, which places no restrictions on the President's ability to reappoint a candidate. In less than one calendar year, the Navajo Council has removed two confirmed Attorney Generals. All told, the Navajo Nation Department of Justice has now had five acting or confirmed Attorney Generals during that time. In the interest of stability and continuity, the nation will be served by having you continue to lead this critically important department. This decision is consistent with the principles that Navajo thinking looks forward, not back. It is my understanding that the council members voted on you without engaging in true back and forth dialogue and interviews, which would have potentially allowed you to demonstrate your qualification of fitness for the role. Therefore, in the spirit of keh and coming together, I hope that this appointment encourages council to talk things out and meet with you directly so that you can show them your fitness and qualifications and character. Congratulations, Acting Attorney General Chris Beecher. Sincerely, Boo Nigren, Navajo Nation President. And then, I think when it comes to Honorable Eugene Charles Newton, thank you for your comments. I appreciate you.
Hi, thank you President Nigren for sharing the letter that you have sent over. Again, we did receive that memo about an hour ago, which contained a letter reappointing Chris Beecher as Acting Attorney General. I just think that for this body, we worked through Title II. And council did the appropriate legislative process to confirm and to consider Mr. Chris Beecher. And it's just very disrespectful to know that this council voted down unanimously. There was no one single green vote for the confirmation. And it's just very disrespectful to see that that type of vote is not honored through the council or even upon, you know, finalizing or engrossing the resolution itself. So it's just very, it's just very inappropriate that continuously, that Navajo Nation law continues to be made fun of or a joke. I just think that, you know, I respect each of my colleagues that are members of this body. I didn't vote, however, my colleagues did vote. And chairing that meeting, you know, it's just very disheartening to see that their red votes or their non-confirmation is not respected at all at any level. So I just wanted to add that as you read that letter into the record or into to council chambers here. So it's undermining, again, the council and our laws and the people that we serve, our chapters. So I'll go next to Delegate Nez and then I'll go to Chair Jesus. I'm going to go still at two at a time. And colleagues, as a reminder, our staff are also ready there at the chapter four. So, ah, jethol. Not that this kid, that, when were we going to be over? So just a reminder. Delegate Nez.
Thank you Speaker. Arakorot'alt'och'ech'eh for being here in the People's Chambers. So I'm going to go through a series of questions. I don't anticipate them being answered simply because you did not answer Honorable Charles Newton as well as Delegate James's questions. But I do want you to address them here. Earlier, eh kwa'eki anihinnal't'oto' kwa'eki belatasitli legislation 261-25, which was introduced last week on Wednesday, the 19th. And in that legislation, we have funds that would restore the LDA program. Akho, we have several LDAs that are currently in the People's Chambers. Aroth'lat'chin'adeh da'isun'alt'ah. We have those that are online. Akho nishin'hit'ashin'pansin'case. Today is technically the last day for our LDAs to do the work on behalf of our communities. And this council passed a resolution to take our LDAs into the end of November. Akho ajep'ach'holjy'chok'ach'eh is a federal holiday. Arona kisk'kong'na'alt'oto' is a Navajo Nation holiday and then we're into the weekend. Akho, I don't know if you, I mean, you should have a position by now. Will you or will you not support the positions of nearly 30 employees of the Navajo Nation? These are legislative district assistants who provide technical service on behalf of our communities, who serve as liaison to the work that is happening here in Windarok through the programming and services that occur within the executive branch. And a response currently would be helpful, leading into the holiday. Akho, they have families, they have children, they have similar things that we all do to get us through our day-to-day lives. And I do, I tried internally to make some decisions. I was willing to give up a portion of my salary to my LDA because that's, we are a very good duo for our communities that we represent. And so, And so, this legislation was dropped last week on Wednesday, the 19th. And eight minutes before the start of our meeting, we got a request to support a supplemental request for your office. Seven days later and eight minutes before the start of our meeting is when we received this request. And I don't understand why a request or discussions didn't happen a lot sooner. It actually took less days for your office to transfer over $200,000 for the K-9 unit, from the K-9 unit. It also took your office less days to turn on your P-card, which I believe was unlawfully done. And so you're here indicating that you want to talk about budget. So whose budget are you using to conduct your operations and to travel? Because it is my understanding that you did not have a travel budget or operations. So I'm curious as to which one of our programs, which one of even our, our, what do they call them? One of our other external entities are also supporting that. And so since the last time you came before this body regarding your budget was on September 25th. And at that time, I did ask and mention and stated on the record that there was over 36 staff assistants, six who make over $100,000, four who make over $90,000, and eight who make over $80,000. And as it was mentioned earlier, what then are the qualifications? And I know they're appointed positions. But this body and even through the Health Education Human Services Committee, we try to establish procedural steps to carry out the responsibilities that should be coming automatically from the executive branch. And being able to fulfill those because where is OPVP? Where is a staff to participate in our Health Education Human Services Committee? We had some of our clients within some of our home living care who are almost transferred. We had the closure of the several different programming such as WIC and others. And it's trying to get these simple tasks completed on behalf of our programs that provide to our Dena people. And so I'm unsure how those negotiations are established between your executive staff assistants or staff assistants compared to those who are hired through the Navajo Nation employment and those that are subject to the DPM's manual? When we, as the legislative body, have to continue to confront those challenges and then try to resolve those issues? And so to me, it just didn't make logical sense to request at the time, 1.5 million, of which half a million, a little over half a million, was for travel. Which leads me into my next question. From that time to today, which is about a good two months, little over two months, two months and one day. What then has been your strategy? Or what initiative have you taken to secure some of those funds? Because into work that we do, into places that we go, I always see a new staff, which tells me staff are not staying within your branch or within your office. And there's a request for 15 additional positions when you have staff that are not staying within your office. And one of my suggestions at the time then was to use some of those funds for your vacancies to help assist where you needed them most. And I don't know if such a prioritization was established, but I just want to understand then what was the initiative or any action that was taken in over two months? And currently, how many vacancies do you have as of today? And I think it was mentioned earlier that it was, those vacancies equated to a little over $1 million based on the projected amounts that were given. And so what we saw last time was at the 11th hour, there was a request for 38 programs within your office that you proposed to advocate for, which later, four days later, on the 29th, there was a legislation drop that went down to 10 programs. And I want to remind you here, because it has your heading at the top, of the programs that were allocated funding over the course of two years since the first fiscal year '24, your office was the only office that received additional funds. There was a decrease in Department of Justice, OMB, Tax Commission, Controller, Community Development, the Department of Dena Education, Economic Development, EPA, General Services, Department of Health, Human Resources stayed the same. Natural Resources also saw a decrease. Public Safety saw the similar amounts. Children and Family Services got a decrease as well as the Division of Transportation. And at the time, I explained to you that it didn't seem logical to pull funds from these direct services to almost establish a division-wide operation with over 40 employees within the office of the President and Vice President. And keep in mind, there's currently a legislation out now, 259-25, which is requesting Doty's Department of Dena Education budget, which they saw a difference of $1.1 million. And on Monday, we were informed at the Health Education Human Service Committee that a lot of our ODY programs are unable to pay for their utilities and pay for services that go directly to our youth. And we were also blamed for pulling funds when it was not the Health Education Human Service Committee. It was through your office that you've pulled funds to support the additional programming and positions within the OPVP. So that's also where I need additional clarification on the process in which you think and administer with your staff to carry out the functions when it comes to the budget. Because to me, it does not make logical sense. And I will not vote as well to provide additional funds to your office when there are manageable ways to carry out what already exists within your office. And so I know with the additional funds, I'm not sure what your, what the outcome will be for this legislation we just passed. And I know that, you know, the court has granted your TRO. But my position is if they're going to halt us from voting to remove you, then they should halt every fiscal as well as other decisions that are coming out of your office. And the reappointment of Mr. Beecher is one that I feel is a dangerous one because of what was also shared here within the during our last convening to consider that legislation. It is not the first legislation or appointee that remains in that office as you have other appointed division directors and other directors who had no confidence, who are still in these operations, making these large-scale decisions. And that should have been also what entailed in that court decision. So with that, Speaker, that concludes my questions and comments at this time. Thank you.
Delegate Nez, going to Chair Jesus.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. Ado colleagues of the 25th Navajo Nation Council. Ado to our visitors in the gallery, our LDA staff that are patiently waiting for that hot, delicious turkey dinner at St. Michael's Chapter. No hila. Nahasaha jishan. La jinke na tani eshe chat iin zan executive branch da. CEO nlini gi. Kodo shchat iin ya. Executive branch zan chandal nishigi. Kodo, division directors beke den nii gi. It's itash chat iin ya. Ado beish manas ane bechay yada lte etapetoh ne. I honestly don't understand why your appointed division directors are constantly conveying and threatening the employees who have rights under Department of Personnel Management that they should be working in a work-free environment, free from hostile harassment-threatening situation. The division directors, the nlini gi, and maybe even staff from OPVP to conduct themselves with this type of a behavior. No one chon kadeh. You hear council delegates, you geani la naadilkeh. So I'm going to bring this issue to, up to you. And I believe I sent two emails. This is the appointed Acting Division Director, Mrs. Platero, with Division of Economic Development. Have you had the opportunity or your chief of staff had the opportunity to sit down with her? Do you realize the high tension in that office right now? There has been high turnover rates. The two staff yesterday had resigned. And how many more staff was she ready to fire? But they just resigned or opted to take retirement. We talk about employee retention because it's hard to recruit an employee. We're supposed to protect our employees. I don't know if it's because of retaliation, we go after employees. Could you please, please, talk to her? Maybe she's not the perfect candidate for this position. Because Shanto Hotel, you, you know, President Nygram, that that hotel is not even open. Let's have DED run with the business site lease, but some percentage of that fee, going back to Shanto Chapter, Kodo, Shiyage Herman Daniels. Give the business site lease to Navajo Nation Hospitality. But you know what? Charlene Begay Platero, Anthony Perry. They want to give it to Medallion Canyonlands. That is a big risk. So please, President, as a matter of fact, RDC has this legislation on, on their agenda. Ado inda, the veterans. Do we just say we appreciate and respect veterans? Is it just words? For me, it's not. And I sent an email. Native Community Capital, we haven't gotten an update, President, nor ARPA dollars. 71 veterans through homeownership program with Navajo Housing Authority were promised to get their mortgages paid off. In hopes that they, it was going to be true, some of those veterans got behind on their mortgages and Enixche started writing letters to them. That's even in an email thread. I haven't heard no word back from OPVP. Ado kuna ana grazing officials. Some of them even get threatened with a gun to their head just because they're trying to impose the laws of grazing under 25 CFR subsection 167, 160, 166. And please, through your media out to the constituents and tell Mr. Thomas Cody to quit telling people it's, it's okay to overgraze. Go over your sheep units of your grazing permit. That is a no-no. We talk about climate change and drought issues, drought contingency plan. We're trying to come up with a plan on how do we nicely convey to our constituents to cut back on their herd because we don't get the, have the vegetation no more from the precipitations that we used to get. They need to be offered more stipend because right now, $800 with just $200 of mileage, shoot, that is nothing, especially with the current cost of living. The other one, that Peabody closure. Last week at Forest Lake, I was the only council delegate there. And we had a deadline to meet of a public comment last Thursday. And I'm glad that Speaker Curly sent out a lot of the staff from her office who assisted. And through the Office of Surface-Minding Reclamation, we never got no proper government-to-government consultation, and they were asking for a permit renewal. But I'm glad that Speaker Curly and I had a position where all the community members surrounding that Peabody area opposed that permit renewal. So you need to possibly send out a position from the executive branch side to Office of Surface-Minding. Mr. William Skeet knows within Minerals Department. And we need to support our relatives in that area. And I sure hope that when RDC schedules a leadership meeting in January back at Forest Lake, that you'll come join us. You need to hear our people's voices out there. I'm probably the lowest-paid delegate here on council, to be honest with you. But I'm trying to do my best to push a lot of these initiatives. So I want to have you put that on your radar. The next one is Division of Community Development. Ms. Candace Yasi, you had appointed in there. The young lady never responds to any of my emails because we're trying to push ARPA, we're trying to push the CHID homes. Section 3, section 11. But I'm glad that I got a response yesterday from FRF that Wilson and his team is going to retake those sections. Because I had chapter community members that have been asking me. We're not getting a response in our bathroom addition or renovation. And I really think that we need, you need to hold your division directors to the utmost professionalism. You know, I don't, I don't ever say anything, but I think I'm just frustrated. And Amber, Chair Karadi, had stated, sometimes I feel like I am project manager for some of these divisions. But hey, you know, I don't mind because this is what I signed up for as a council delegate. I don't need the credit. So long that these work has been done during my tenure as a council delegate. So that's another area. Now, the next one, 3720 line at Antelope Point Marina. We really need to go after National Park Service. No more are we going to be pushed around by National Park Service. We need to get that mid-channel back. And we're having those discussions, but we need to sit down with Department of Interior, National Park Service. No more. Several decades ago. And that's one of the priorities that we have on RDC. The other one is Title III amendments for grazing. I know Department of Ag is doing their best, but if you can just start letting the Grazing Council know across the Navajo Nation that we need to make these amendments. You know, we have all the departments and divisions coming before RDC saying, oh, well, this is the barriers and the challenges. Well, guess what? They don't bring us the strike-over language in these existing laws and put in a new language until we have to sit down and have a work session with them. They need to be proactive, President. We have a year left. I sure want to have this RDC leave some sort of a a vision or a path going forward. The next one is I'm so happy Energy Office is moving forward. We will be reconvening here the first part of January. And hopefully, the plan of operation for the Energy Office with the legislation will be dropped then. And the next stop is that we're going to be approaching council for a $1.5 million budget to start that Energy Office. So Mr. Director Holona is aware of this, and we're trying to push this. And thank you for Mr. Sam Woods and Steve Gunderson. Boy, you know, they were able to get that assessment and analyses out within two and a half months. And thank you for extending their contract because those are the experts that we need. People that know their job instead of just going round and round like we're stuck in a mud and not going nowhere. I just feel like that with some of your division directors. I'm sorry to say, but that's just the comment that I want to make. And it's a day before Thanksgiving and we're sitting here. I feel sorry for my colleagues that have to still travel four hours home. God bless you and God bless each of you. But I don't need no response, President. I just wanted to make that known. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Delegate Jesus, President Nygram.
Thank you. I think, again, I think the one thing I want to mention to Honorable Dr. Nez is definitely, I know that your vote is yes or no on my budget and everything. But on my end, I'm definitely thinking about the LDAs. I know that you don't support me, but I'm thinking about supporting you as well too when it comes to your LDA. So, but again, I'm thinking about it, I know. So that's something that for sure, that's why I kind of gave you the thumbs up earlier. But again, you mentioned earlier about how, why did I allocate dollars to myself and decrease everybody else's budget? The issue is, I was only given a certain, a pot of money that was lower than last year. And so what I allocated And so what I allocated, eventually what came to me was, as Delegate Karadi mentioned, I only got an additional $350,000 total at the end of the day. So it's not millions of dollars extra that I got. And so every single program, every single department, they're still short in a lot of areas. And that's why we still submitted a lot of their budget forms on, last week as well on Saturday. Because not just me, if you're not going to fund me, that's fine, but at least you should fund all the other departments and programs that need funding because they need it. And it's not because I got that three, because if you total all their needs, it's more than $350,000. So even if you took the $350,000 increase in mind, that's not going to, that's not, that doesn't amount to the millions and millions of dollars of a need. So, so again, I just wanted to correct that statement on your end. And then, but again, the LDA situation, let me, again, that, again, I feel for it. So I'm going to honor that. And I think if the LDAs are listening, don't worry about it. And then when it comes to Brenda, I know you don't want a response, but I think that you're right. The 100,000 feral horses. I just met with Department of Agriculture today, it's over 100,000 feral horses. That's more than all the sheep and probably cattle we have combined on the nation. And so the number one problem, and a lot of these feral horses, feral horses don't have owners. So we really got to take a strong stance on that. So again, 100,000 plus feral horses across the nation. And right now, the BIA only allocated us 125 acres of grazing and 100, and that's, no, 100, I think I was still 125 head of sheep. And we're over 100, we're over 100,000 horses. And we know horses eat way more than sheep. So we're far exceeding what we're allowed to graze. So I think the first thing that we got to address is the feral horse issues. And then we got the feral dog challenges and issues that we still haven't resolved because people are still being attacked, animals and livestock are still being attacked. And, and I think that's where I think I mentioned to Jessie and her team this morning. I say, hey, why, we got to, we should deploy a lot of these AIF dollars to address some of those issues because these are real issues. And I think that if somehow we kind of take it as a priority, right? And I, I try not to attack a lot of our grandmas and grandpas because they barely, they're still feeding their animals. That's their, that's their only companion. They got sheep, they got cattle, they buy, they buy hay, they're still hauling water. But to me, if I were to prioritize, it's feral horses, 100,000 of them that we still got to solve. And then we got the feral dog population, animal population that we got to address. And then I think let's start educating our grandmas and our grandpas that have maybe more than 10 sheep or whatever, however the quantities are. But I think they're, to me, they're, they're lower in priority. Number one priority is the feral horses and the feral dogs because it's really affecting our lands and hurting our people in our community as well too. Again, I do, let me work on getting that support letter. I do not, I completely oppose any minds reopening in the state of Arizona. So again, that's an easy one. And then I think when it comes to, again, I'll just have another discussion. I think we're having, again, we have our own potluck as well, across the street as well too. So again, we'll do that and I just want to say thank you, thank you on that part.
Thank you, President. And going to Shijia Chairman So.
Thank you, Chairman Speaker, hello members of the council for being here. Mr. Beecher, thank you for coming. And also with the administration that you have, your, your team. I've seen four administrations. And I see, I've seen how leadership is changing with time. As an example, Yahiaha, it was very hard to get a UUFP. It was very hard to get 16 votes on a UUFP legislation. Council just didn't say, oh, give it to him, give it to him. I'm weighing them out. And I had a power line extension and I remember, I remember it was, it was opposed heavily on, on the floor. And this, this, this amount of work that I had to do to bring the council over. And that's, that's what I mean, is that I'm looking at leadership from then into now. We utilize analogies to, to get a point across. And again, I will say, for me. What happened on this floor, I seen two of them, between two delegates really ready to fight. And one was, you know, sitting there and just speaking my, you know. You hear it on the floor too. Don't take this position as granted. We are here for a reason. I really don't expect a response. When you came here, you know, that was the same message. The main comprehensive budget that was passed. Your office is feeling that. We're feeling the line item veto here over here. And maybe if that wasn't the case on the, on the operational and things like that, you know, we, we would be feeling the, the same impacts. I do agree that with this new process of how, how the budget happened this year. I had concerns, but I had the trust of, of the Budget and Finance Committee to bring something forth. You know, I, you know, I always think about it. Yes, the past three-year average was utilized. But you have to remember that in 2022, we were in the era of COVID. The nation's budget wasn't, wasn't that, wasn't at that, at that level. Then you look at '23, we are exiting COVID. A cup of coffee that's 12 ounces, almost $2. $2.11 at Speedway. $1.59. $2.19, whatever that amount was. Three Branch Chiefs Agreement. That's a reflection of where you come from. Let us get the, get the FY '26 budget, what was projected, or was recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee to the council. I do see that we have to change Title 12. We have to clarify how, after the controller makes his or her budget projection, the three branch chiefs, what percentage ratio they get. It has to be based off of something. I never seen my grandmother go and lash out to my grandfather. She was a very modest person. I wouldn't change anything in my life. I wouldn't change anything in my life. When leadership starts to undermine each other, odd, there's issues. Every day you guys are out there too, just as our LDAs. They don't agree, but they find the middle point, to find middle ground to move on. And I voiced that and I was told that's the old way of doing things. When I look at society. Washington. Washington, nlede ei a'ni aha'n'eh di, hat'ohto, hat's'il, bech'ch'ajto'ye'lo. Chala ei a'kui ch'inga'de, nichiti, nichitni'likha'li. De ne'ba Washington, ba'na'ts'il, le, ba'na's'ei, halit'a, be't'a'ne'ndol'ye'li. Da'n'zin, ko, a'kui ch'inga'na'hitit, na'tati, na'ha'a'ja, a'eh de'itati'likha'li. A'jo, ei aha'n'eh di. Ko, hot'a, onas'eh shenand'a. We have the budget formulation meetings coming up. And I think that we really need to get the, our representatives back out there, shenand'a. Chala ei, the federal budget is something that we have to continue to advocate at the federal level. Transportation, the Bureau of Indian Affairs, all these resources, onir's, as close. Ko, o, yuna'nish'lo shenand'a. Eh, eh, hot'a, has'ti'ol'ah, ke'eh.
Yeah, sh'ya, thank you, Chairman So, and ch'ch'ey na'na, Delegate Toth.
Uh, thank you, Madam Speaker. Aro kodoo, aro kwenilt'eh na'sit'hand, aro adix'ch'ey, hyin'ya'la'to, ke'eh. Ishi, I'm just gonna say some few words, you don't need to respond back to me. E na'tinigi, do han'ne'igi. I went to military and went to boarding school military and came back, I became a law enforcement. Twenty-nine years, sir. Saved a lot of people. And been cussed out. Eh, o's'te, shenand'chinti do, government ban'tis'ns. Nineteen eighty-nine turmoil banas'teh, sh'ch'ey, kune xin'na. A'ebet's'ado, de ne, lts'kon'cha'ti hin'akode. E'ta, k'edita, kerme banas'ns'ho sergeant, shlong, k'eh's'tol'aa, do'tan'hitol'aa. De ne, aro staff do, twelve klaw, hoti. Because of mismanagement by the chairman at that time. I witnessed a lot of, you know, activity that went on. A do, Washington, shenalladini. Do ni' government ni'ga'de'ta, nde'ta, bi'a, ei was ready to take over. Ab'la'te, sala'ls'askai, we had two government. K'j'uhnan ne, k'j'nan hitetno. So we broke into District Judge Chamber. And we were ready to go into administration at where you at, sh'ch'ey. A hot'a'hin'na'n'sh'deliya. A't'shnenni ke, ho, ne'lo. A'de, hu'na do, nihle'ba's'ts'ti, s'sizin do. A kolacha'it'a, ei has'teh'ti'ili. Ni'he'be na'ha'huin'teh. Chwe't, allahne'tlo, kod'eh, ne'da, l'wo protesta'ta'n'lo, ta'n'os'yo. A'ju do, hot'a banal'ki. T'oba'yaasen, t'a' si'toba'yaasen. Od'obeh'te'ta. Every day, at pe'sit'ch'ahl'bigi ch'eh, na'ha'ne, na'ha'ne, do. Speaker ta'ch'ana'ta. Exit il'ah, sh'ch'ey. Do bohne'tlida, kod'et neb'ka'to, hu'len'ch'eh'da di'ne. Division Director, j'n'das'ti. They're not being honest with all this information because it coming from yours. I don't know who, how you evaluate your staff to be Chief of Staff. A kon'la'ta's'ta. De ne ya'ti'na'ta, forcing to science and document, ha'tno'ta. Is that the kind of leadership we want with our government? I don't think so. No way. Look at us, there's only few of us, sir. A do'ta'yi, ner'di'ota di'ni. Halit'a'yi do, respect us. A do apologize in'ntla. Heisen's'age, di line, a'ryn vito, ish'la, ba'ka'ha'de'sht'hal, has'ta, na'tle'te di'ni, lanson, aro'ta. Eben na, kon, wel'ti'ko ni'ya'hit. De ne'be, na't'a, do, de ne'be, yo, o, in'lish'chn'le'ta di'no, ne do'shen'ahl'ho dena. Halit'a, a'tni'la sh'ch'ey. De ne'be, na'ha'ga, do, ne'be, na't'a, do, b'ne, b'nan'tin'gich'eh, do, ni'hamasan eh, ne wel't, sh'iyaji, h'yo, tah'huin'ya. A do, ab'al'no'ta handi'lo, a'ta'nsen kes. Eh, hot'a, ei n'ch'eh'ta'isi, k'edhad'ei banal'te, ban'ekeh. Ako, kodova, da'eli'ado, pa'cha'da kon, ei ch'ila, nan, a'edel'ge, in'ntla, t'os'nh'ha'tlo. T'os'nh'ha'otlo. E'ya na't'a'ni, o'da di'sh'ek'ko, va'akoda tz'nz'ns. Ni'ni'atsa, I don't know. Ne wel, h'yo do lehti, nen'ea ba'ten, sh'ch'ey. Every day, we're trying to do and help our community with this project. So we rely on you to get this job done. There's ARPA money, there's state funding going back to the state. Ako, kod'et o, lch'itni'ta, a'si'to'sh'l. Tosh'l, bechi'nda'yo'li. If it was my child, my own child, making mistake, I'm gonna whip that person, my own child. My little girl was in the elementary school and she stole some stuff from the classroom, you know what I did, sir? With uniform, I went in, arrested her and take her to juvenile. And now she has kids, now she has a life and a good job. That taught her. Ni'hamasan eh, ni'ch'ey. Be'ke'da ho, ni'to. Sh'ch'ey eh, yo, has'tch'ke'de. Sh'masan eh, eh yo, eh, kune'nda, ni'ch'ey'de. A hot'a, ni'ya'da ho, a do, huwan, maz'ib'ye. No electric, no water. Went to boarding school. Hot'a, ka, ei ya'hey. You disappointed in me, sh'ch'ey, with the vote that I took. I served this country for my land, for our land, for our people, freedom of speech. Oka bayanson. Ako, kodoo, apologize, in'ntla, kodoo, b'la'te huin'ila, eh, et's, na, an'hit'ena'sit'hand, kodoo. Do bohne'tlida, I hate to say this to you, sir, with all due respect. Ash'odeh, ch'etan di, nihla, had's be'han'aditze. Had's ayat, eh, be'ch'ach'aditze'to, lch'ach'aditzoko. Lch'et'ne, binoh, kha'teh'te, di'ili'te di'ni l'na'ten. Os'j'anxi, ha'tno. Sh'ch'ey, kwen'j'aven'cha, has'ti, elderly's. Division Director, that we oppose, yen, a'hu'ne'ta'na'sta, do. Beso'ta'nda'ti, ch'epas'ha'ho ni'tlo, Hess Committee. The other one is veterans, who won. This, this place in Etap'at'elia. Is the Hess committee came in and tried to straighten up, dismiss. The person that you delegate is not being honest to, to the committee. Even the neb'kiya'tu Navahu Nation. Sala'ts'oh, b'nhit'ln'la di'ne, che' a'ni'sh'ln'la, bayasht'ki do, ko, ba's'sch'ke. Na'ha'na'ka'ho, ei ya'ey, nda'okan. An'ne, bu'gal'da, ti'ku'ch'eh, njan'ne, ne, nch'edah, xin red light, da, radio, da, internet, xin b'hol'la. These young veterans, they sacrificed their life to have freedom of speech, freedom of religion. E'at'ne. Ako. Had's she'ya'ya'ha'ya'na'de di, nihla, had's she'ta'ha'hi di, no, kod'eh has'teh'to, nihla, nen'egi. It has to come from you. It has to come from you at this point. H'yo, ch'it'el'na'sh'yo, ni'hit'ntz'ha, na'nta, has'ti'lo, ho, hot'a'te'ta, n'teh. A do, staff, Chief of Staff, eh, da'sh'ln'lis, on, geta'ne'sh'cha, tz'ne'da banan'klis. With all due respect, sir. Hot'a b'ch'ach'aditze'to, hot'a nch'ach'aditze, on, s'skes, n'de. Ha's'thwi le, h'lo'n, k'et'ba'to, xin, llo, na'tan'ohls, k'is, l'ba's'unchi. A'de, isha't, ne'no, bayan'lti'la, sh'ch'ey, do's'masan, sh'ha'ti'no. E'eh, hot'a, ei be'ach'aditze. H'yo, no'li. We have to come back together. Do, on'na'sh'ida, hot'a'te'to li. Zon'hit'ah, ban'et'lis. S'na, hot'a'te'nit'hi'te, no. Hot'a, ei ya'hey, ash'odeh, ch'eh, da di, nik'odoo. Eben na, na'ha'ban'sen kes. Na'ha's'te'n'tlo, ei konst'hi, point in'la, a'chat'ant'la. La, k'na'di'li, chwe't'a, ni'do li. We'll support you, but right now, you disappointed me. I say my, I serve my timely military to have freedom of religion, freedom of speech, ke'ya. I suffered for it. We suffered. A hot'a, ei konha'de's'te'to, ke'eh, k'eh, you don't have to respond to me, on'na'tin'de'sh'ch'ey. A do, don'sh'ha, na'sh'khot'a, do, ha'as'hi. A'nas's'ti. Hot'a, ka, ei ya'sh's'esa. Ako, a'ni, a'da'no, di'kon, line, a'ryn vito ke, a'ni, ro'sh'la, k'eh, lch'inda, hu'inn'ala. Pa'cha, na'ts'oh, sa't'hal'eh, de di'ni l'an'son. Ab'la'tch'la'ta, kon, ei, na'ta'na's'tli, o, ben'na, il, sad, nik'is'eh, beyada'ilti. Ako, a do, Speaker, doho, nichi we'ni na'ha'sha'n'olla. You should be come together and work together. Adai lo, turni, lch'ade'la'ya. Ben'are'ta di'teh. Shouldn't be the case. E di huwa'de, ei a'ni, bi'iro'ale, na'ha'cha, cha, ba'cha'ta'isi, h'zo, tah'huin'oh, a'tol'li. Sa'ahna'g'ebi ke, h'wo'jon, ta'ta di'ke'ha'ti. Ta'n'hit'oh, ni'li'ha'ti banal'te kod'eh. I spent eight years, back in nineteen ninety-five up to oh-three. Ita Ethics and Rules Committee, ha'lo'n. O, ha'yu, be'swas'ando, a do'lam, bordo, employees sanctioned el'ya. Ita'ka'a, des'ye'li. Ita'eri ei, ne'ch'banda'ha'ch'eh, ho. Next day, j'no, na'ta'tlo. Eh'da ho, nilz'as'ch'ey. Aro, hot'a, ei kon, aro'bi ke'ha'nt'eh'da. H'yo, ban'sen kes, na'jo, ban'al'tchenh'olo, indan'isi lto. A don'la'to, pe'sit'ch'ahl'bigi do, ha'nt'sh'il'to. An, an'henli. E'be'swas'amb'na'ta, do, be'son'han'it, in a do, eh, hot'a, b'inde'ln'is. Si'isht'eh, j'no, edo. A'ni, hu'ch'et'oh, xin'abetsu, dah'jo, a'tol'li, li'sh'ach'ikha'ho. E' a'ni, you credit yourself like that, so. What's sh'ch'ey, aro'bi ke'ha'nt'eh'da, ba'ja, has'tch'ke'ayat, eh, be'na'th'ondi. K'eh, kesh'mash'ij'ra di, nen'ea ch'ko eda, neb'ki'ye'lti, ko. H'yo, xin'do li, skano, w'chi, next week, da, h'yo, ch'ih'ya'ya'na'di'ka. Ni'hit'la, a hot'a, ni'tzen. Eh, eh, hot'a'sch'ey, do, thank you, Madam Speaker.
Yeah, sh'ch'ey, Delegate Toth. I'll go back to Chairwoman Karadi.
Alrighty, appreciate it. So back to the budget. Um, I'm gonna actually ask, because I have both of you here, and we have staff here. So again, correcting staff, going back to Navahu Nation Law and Policy. So what the last two hours, we've been talking, this memo that you shared, President Nigren, is, um... Illegal or does not properly cite or use terms proper with, um... Title II, Section 192 Personnel, the Attorney General, Section B. So, it's weird because it is cited, pidyon picking, right? We heard that in court. So the citation is that, okay, let me go back to it. Again, I won't invoice you for my time, but if we have an Attorney General acting, and there's no provision in Navahu Nation position, just like interim controller, there's no acting Attorney General. So I've looked on BPM's website, and I'm gonna provide everyone the definition of the Attorney General position and the recommendations. So I'll go first with the memo. So the memo does say re-appointment as, wait, it says re, so regarding, appointment as Navahu Nation Attorney General. President Nigren, I apologize, you don't have that authority under Title II. Title II specifically states, and it's here, you, you cite it in the next sentence. It does state that the Attorney General and Deputy Attorney General shall, and you, it's always, it's always, um, bold it. So I hope we all understand what that process looks like. Shall be appointed by the Navahu Nation Council, comma, upon the recommendation, so that's the verb. So we need to get that clear to your staff, your elite staff. The appoint, the power and authority of appointing the Attorney General based off of this section, per the law that you cite, lies with the Navahu Nation Council. So why is that important? Because there's no term Acting Attorney General. I looked at the code, I've been looking at memos and definitions, and I agree. This position is so important that there should not be a lapse, right? Not even one minute without a Navahu Nation Attorney General. What the code doesn't state, because if, like right now, the Attorney General's position is vacant. So what the code says is the Deputy Attorney General will assume that position with all of the powers. So why am I saying this, staff, elite staff? Is we haven't seen a recommendation from the president for a Deputy Attorney General. And because we haven't been provided that opportunity, we have, the council has not been provided the opportunity to in fact make the appointment. So why am I raising this? Because I'm gonna tell Legislative Council, I have a concern. I believe at this point, with what's the provisions on the Attorney General, this is in DPM. So if you need a copy, you have a Division Director from DHR DPM, and they could pull up the Attorney General position. That at this point, the Navajo Nation people want to vote on the Attorney General. And so if Legislative Council, in my request, so I wanted to let you know first, this is why I'm saying this. Because I agree, when we undermine each other, it's the people and the instability of the government. So, I had mentioned the reliance on Navajo Nation law with an Attorney General opinion. And we haven't had an Attorney General since Heather Claw. And at one point, we should talk about that removal. But I know that there's ongoing investigation, so we can't talk about it until these cases are resolved. So to Legislative Council, what I would need as our Chief Legislative Counsel, since we do not have an Attorney General, we do not have a Deputy Attorney General. I am requesting to declare an emergency. And that Council take action to either waive the Title II provision on the process of the Attorney General, so that we can... This is where I need your help. What would be the words that we would need to have someone in that position that at least makes, meets the basic requirements? And can serve in the capacity of the Attorney General until one is confirmed? That's why I think going to the vote of the people, because then it's the people who will vote in this Attorney General in terms. And just like delegates, just like President, once we, you know, that time noon, I don't know, the second Tuesday in January, once we take the oath, then that Attorney General takes the oath and is in there. So that solves a lot of this, because what we've been, what we have experienced with the Navajo Nation Department of Justice has compromised these sections in the law. And this has not, the, the plan of operation hasn't been updated since nineteen ninety. So I understand we're talking about some of the reforms from nineteen eighty-nine. And so this used to have, you know, Department of Justice used to have another name. And so this would give us time to reexamine that plan of operation, since this all relies on it. And I'm concerned, and why am I bringing up this concern? Because I thought, I received an email from an employee who was fired, and from Department of Justice, because they stated that the Office of the Attorney General is reorganizing. And our question back was, under what authority? Can you reorganize an office when by law you're not appointed? So, the President has the ability to recommend, I'm not sure, Judge, if you wanted to say that you have recommendations for the Attorney General, and if you have recommendations for the Deputy Attorney General, but there's no provision on acting. And so I'd request if we could get an updated memo, so that your staff can correct the terms. And we'll also need to negotiate the salary. We would need that transparency. Because this is where I'm concerned, because we talk about separation of power. Your first sentence here, let me put back on my glasses, says, "I am recommending", which the code gives you that authority, "and appointing". You see, that's the authority of the Council. I don't know if you caught that. As the Attorney General. And that's just not the way it works, and that's not how the law is stated. And so, I'm not sure then if this memo, or I would say right now it's not valid, because it's supposed to be a recommendation. And it's also supposed to provide not only a recommendation, but a clear negotiated salary. That's why I'm bringing it up, because it goes back to the budget. Because if we have the vacancy of an Attorney General and a vacancy of a Deputy Attorney General, this also then could be some funding that we talk about, that could be used to help support enhancing legal resources, because the chapters really need a lot of guidance, and it's under DOJ. So if these positions are vacant, then maybe we can use some of that funding to help and support the chapters or other programs that are in need of Department of Justice support. So I would ask for that, Speaker, that's why I want our Chief Legislative Counsel to review this memo. I know we all received it, but there should be a response in terms of the words that are used and the citation of the law, since there's no authority, like we, the Council cannot recommend. So we cannot recommend according to the law as it states now, but we could appoint. And so what this opens up, is in my understanding, is if the Office of the President wants to appoint and recommend, then is this memo opening up and asking the Council to do the same thing? Are you asking us to recommend and then appoint the Attorney General and the Deputy Attorney General? And that's where we have to be clear when we provide citations and words, because you did sign it. And I don't know if, and with this memo, I didn't get a copy, if there was acceptance on the recommendation and the negotiated salary. So we're still up to this hour without a Navajo Nation Attorney General and Deputy Attorney General. So I just wanted to raise that, because I think the salaries, if DPM can pull out the salaries, and we could just see what is the opportunity there to help support some of the other needs of the nation, going back to the public comments and the need for additional support. So appreciate the opportunity. Thank you, colleagues. We will also come back and... Right, so I want to go back to that vote. And how do we make that happen? If we could get a chapter template developed on, then we could have this conversation with our community members and talk about what would that look like to vote in an Attorney General? I know New Mexico, Arizona, I think the surrounding states do, and it's been a really great recommendation. And that will leave, you know, this maneuvering out of the process, so that we could really focus on stabilizing the Navajo Nation and have a chief legal officer that meets the requirements, and also then can, you know, work at the pleasure of the people. And it could give the people, which we have all agreed are the ultimate source of power and authority, the people to decide on who will be their Attorney General. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Karadi. And I'll go back to the President.
Thank you, thank you so much. I gotta do apologize, I know that I got staff across the street that I want to go see. I know they've been there since twelve, so I'm gonna make my way out. I know you guys have the same situation as well too. So again, I think that this was a really good discussion, I really do appreciate everything that we talked about all the way around. Comments are well taken, and I think that my hope is that we figure out how to get, as Mr. Tolth mentioned earlier, in Navajo. Like how do we, how do we put our differences aside and go to work and do the work that we need to do? You know, this is a, it's, all of this cannot rest on my shoulders, all of it can't rest on your shoulders. There's gotta be some sort of compromise that we gotta come to. And if not, then this is just gonna be how it is for the next thirteen months. And so, as you said, Amber, the Navajo people have a say on who will govern them for the next four years. And I think that we gotta, we gotta continue to think about that. How are we gonna work together and enjoy being a team over the next thirteen months? Or is this gonna be it? You know, I mean, it's just the way it's gonna be. So again, as I mentioned earlier, I'll do my best to be considerate of your LDAs. But my hope is that, as Mr. Otto So mentioned in Navajo, and George Tolth mentioned in Navajo too, people are watching us, you know, right now you got a Navajo Nation President that can't travel unless he's driving somewhere. I can't even, even as President, I haven't been DC. I know some of my colleagues in this room have traveled to DC and out and flown different places. But me, as Navajo Nation President, the past two months, I haven't been anywhere except driving distances. So it's either leaving at three in the morning and driving back till midnight. So a lot of that stuff has happened, and I think that being the leader, one of my Title II authorities is to, and Title II, a third authorities, is to represent the Navajo Nation to all outside entities and organizations. And to be denied that is pretty tough, but it's a tough pill to swallow. But again, we'll continue to work on that. So if we continue to just hang out and do what we're doing for the next thirteen months, that'll be fine too. And so I guess we'll just make do with it. And so again, there's gotta be some compromise, but I know that definitely I will be lenient on the LDAs, for sure. And but my hope is that everything else, operating wise, let's suck it up and let's work something out. And then I'll, as I'll take all your comments into consideration. You mentioned that, look at my personnel, right? Let's see what's in personal laps. And let's see what's in personal laps, and see what those vacancies have filled, and I'll take that into consideration. I know that that was mentioned multiple times of what are some of the options to try to move some money from personnel to operating? Well, definitely take a look at that, for sure. I think that's a wonderful suggestion, so that we can continue to try to be as resourceful as possible. So I'll look at that, and really, my hope is, let's just see what happens. But my hope is that, I was hoping for an amendment, but it sounds like I'm not gonna get an amendment anytime soon. So I think that's just, I guess, just the way it is, so. But really, we'll just continue to do what we can with the resources that we have and just make do with it. So I'll reach out to my team and let them know, we'll just have to make, just the way it's been for the last two months, that's probably how it's gonna be for the next thirteen months, so just make do with it. And so, unless, unless something does happen, but again, like I said, I feel for you, LDAs are in here, we'll work that out too. So, but again, I just want to say thank you. I definitely am gonna reflect on all of this over the next several days, and really try to figure out how to how to just move forward and work together, as all of you mentioned, we all have the same priorities every single day. So I will not deny that as well too, so I think that's something that we, we just figure out. So yeah, so I guess, I kinda got my answer coming to the Council today, that it's just gonna be the same for the next several months. So unless something does change, but my hope is that, I was hoping to, even, I know the other thing that was being thrown out there too, was I know, I think earlier discussions was, I think Mr. McCabe was saying, what if you just propose what you actually spent in operating? I think that was like in the nine hundred something thousand on actually what we spent, and maybe that's an option. Again, I'm willing, I came down from one point six, I'm at one point one eight five, and then if what I spent is the nine hundred thousand, then maybe that's what we propose, and as long as we get at the very bare minimum, maybe that's proposal, and maybe that's something that the Council can look at, is what did the Council spend over last year? I know I spent nine hundred thousand, what did the Council spend? Maybe that's the compromise, is you guys propose what you spend, I propose what I spent in operating, and then negotiate on that. So I don't know. So again, I just want to say thank you, God bless, and I know that Thanksgiving, our families are waiting, I just really want to say heha, heha, take care, and I really want to say thank you for at least hearing me out, I tried, you know what I mean? I think I tried to come here, and, but again, your LDAs, I think we'll make sure we take care of them, so. All right, Bea, thank you so much, your cap.
Thank you, President. And my only recommendation, President, is really get familiarized and study Title II and the budget process. Because we started this process back in April of last year. But it's good, because if you do study the budget process and the authorities, and how the law is outlined in Title II. Ah ashjana koe bi vuka, like where leadership needs to be a part of the discussions. And it's us making that financial decision. But again, President, I know that new fiscal year is gonna be coming up, the budget process is gonna start again as early as March. Be really be part of those discussions. Title II is very important, the budget process is very important. That we don't want to experience this again. I tried, I tried again, didn't I? But it's just not one-sided. The female side, the male side, lta'tsalaw. When are we going to just not use one teaching of ke, but also the other side? And looking at the dollar amounts. With in Title II, you have every right to propose a legislation. With the plan, with the right amendments, memos, appendixes. We haven't been that, it's a guide to show how to do that. Don chilbeda hosinoi, come to my office, you know, Speaker, can you help us do this, these forms? We don't know how to do this, can you help us draft? Or yourself and say, okay, well, how do I drop a bill, or how do I do budget forms? How can I secure a sponsor? Speaker, do you know of anyone that can sponsor a bill or an amendment? You know, if the planning, if the legislation went through the five-day comment process, then it was here this morning. Being ahead of schedule. You know, the Council already took action. So, President, I don't know, I don't know how more we can reiterate, but I know it's Thanksgiving time. But again, I think we're all here, we heard. Still, again, the one million dollar increase. There was already an increase. But I know one of the options that were given today is reallocation. So Council already supported increase, now how can you make that five point two million increase work within your office? You know, if you look at Council's budget, we have not, we are not even near the increase that OPVP got since FY two thousand twenty-three. We continuously increase OPVP. But if you look at the comparison of our own investment into our Council or the or the legislative branch or our employees, it's not even near that increase. Because we talk about fairness, we talk about equity, we talk about supporting staff. It doesn't equal up of the amount of increases. Oh, it would be wonderful to get increase for the council or our staff. As a branch chief, looking at three years, five years projections of revenues, yes, it would be wonderful to get increases year after year, year after year, but our revenues are not coming in, direct services are not. Even direct services don't even have that percentage amount of increases. So looking at this at a comprehensive angle, President, we just urge you again, if there's that need to educate for how the budget process works or how spending expenditure rates. So, as President, this is not personal. It's never been personal. And all we're doing is upholding the law. It's not about a power grab. All we're saying is there has to be a process that has to be followed. And I respect my colleagues for demanding that accountability and transparency of following the law, recognizing it, or even amending it or changing it to make it work. So even if you do have suggestions for Title II, Title 12. But we have not seen any type of recommendations for amendments how to make our government efficient. But again, colleagues, I'm sorry that we kept this long. We adjourned since 11:00 AM this morning for a special session. But even though we heard the President say, "I'm still going to line IDV to it." And in an apology. I don't know, the rationale. So maybe what I need is a different teaching of our Navajo way of values and principle. Where this teaching is coming from? But from the stories and the upbringings that we know, I don't see that teaching anywhere in our Navajo Nation. But respectfully, President, we do have still hope that we can figure out a budget process that could work for all branches across the three branches. I know we're going to be with family, but give that time to think about it. And I'm only saying this to one branch chief to another, that we do have to find an efficient way to do this. You know, that's the message that I'm getting right now. But, President, it is now in your hands, these resolutions. It is up to you, if you do respect this body, their vote. Again, that is portion of your authority, responsibility. If you do want to work together, then it shows through the actions that you take on these resolutions. But again, we just reiterate that again. But again, thank you to our staff. I know we had a potluck dinner for Thanksgiving, but thank you for being here, volunteering. And again, President, and to your staff for being here as well. And thank you, colleagues, for being here again today.
President, I did certify the UEFE legislation. I'll have staff, I'll give you a copy. So think about this resolution.